If helpful, can we now commence the broadcast?
Please can I welcome everyone to this extraordinary meeting of the council in the Bapsy Hall, Winchester Guild Hall? I particularly like to welcome members of the public who have submitted questions to the council. Members, our main evening of business this evening, and the purpose for convening of this extraordinary meeting, is the council's consideration of the recommendations of the meeting of the cabinet held on the 19th of August 2024. A reminder that these are to approve for consultation the final version of the Winchester District Submission Local Plan, Reg 19, and the accompanying Integrated Impact Assessment and the Habitats Regulation Assessment. There was extensive discussion at the cabinet meeting on the 19th of August and at the earlier scrutiny committee on the 29th of July. Members and officers have heard from members of the public, representatives of parish councils and other interested parties. The draft minutes of the cabinet, which include the recommendations, were circulated after the cabinet meeting last week and are set out in the supplementary agenda. It is these recommendations that are before you this evening. In addition to the deputations at cabinet and the scrutiny committee, we will be hearing from members of the public who have submitted questions regarding this evening's substantive agenda item. Ordinarily, public questions should be submitted five days before the meeting. However, given the significance of the Regulation 19 Local Plan and the recent change in timetable for the meeting, I gave my permission for the deadline to be extended to 5pm on Monday. So, welcome again to members of the public present here this evening. Now, following questions, we will then move to the councillor questions. These would normally be taken at the end of the agenda, but as is the case for extraordinary meetings of council, these are required to relate to the substantive agenda item, so it will be heard before we move to the main business before us. Now, members, agendas for extraordinary meetings of council usually exclude regular agenda items such as minutes of previous meetings and announcements. However, I would like to make an exception this evening so that the council is able to pay a timely tribute to the former councillor and mayor of Winchester, Barry Lipscomb, who recently passed away. Mr Lipscomb was first elected to the council in 2003, representing the communities of the previous Wanston and Mitchelldeva Ward, and was mayor of Winchester from 2011 to 12, supported by his wife and mayoress Christine, who sadly died in December last year. Mr Lipscomb served on several committees until his retirement, including as a valued member of the planning committee. He was chair of the personnel committee and the environment scrutiny panel. Can I please now ask that all present now stand in a silent tribute to his memory? Thank you. I would like to call on councillor Godfrey to make a brief tribute to Barry Lipscomb, because obviously not all that many of us have worked with him on the council, particularly the younger ones. Thank you councillor Godfrey.
He served in the immigration service for 35 or more years, rising to a senior border force officer, serving late When I proposed him for mayor, Barry told me about an incident at Heathrow where he had to offload a gentleman from a flight who did not want to be offloaded, and he stopped Heathrow operation completely. He had that sort of steel about him. And this came through in his ward work. He put residents first and made sure that they were put ahead of all party and council priorities. They were the people that he looked after, and he was much respected within his ward for that particular characteristic. He was a leader of our group when I first joined and went on to be portfolio holder for planning for a short while, introducing the first statement of community involvement. He did have a sense of humour that I've lived with the last 20 years. When he recruited me to be a councillor, he assured me that it would not take more than three or four hours a week. How I laugh. I am delighted to be able to pay this tribute to my former colleague Barry Lipscomb, who was a fine gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Godfrey. Before we move to the agenda, I would like to deal with the apologies. Apologies for this evening's meeting have been received from councillors Becker, Eve... Right, I'll tick you off the list. Eve Greenberg Small, Tippit Cooper and Westwood. And the first item of business this evening is a disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us this evening?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to disclose I have a pecuniary interest, sorry, in the agenda item today and therefore will not stay for the rest of the meeting.
Right, thank you councillor Cutler. The next?
Mr Mayor, I believe I need to declare a personal interest as a member of Hampshire County Council, but this is not prejudicial, I believe, to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also I also like to carry a non-prejudice or non-pecuniary interest as I'm also a member of the Hampshire County Council.
Right, thank you councillor Porter.
I wish to declare the same interest.
Thank you councillor Todd.
And myself as well, please.
Councillor Walles, thank you very much. Have I missed anybody? Good, okay. Right, the next agenda item is questions from members of the public. I'd like to welcome you all again, all of those who've come this evening and who've submitted questions to the council for an answer. I think there are 10 members 10 members of the public have submitted questions to the council, and I believe six are present this evening to ask their questions in person. The questions received have been published on the councillor's website. Normally, the time allowed for public questions is 20 minutes. However, I have decided to use my discretion to allow 40 minutes and to extend the time that long. Thank you. Now, please can members of the public read out their submitted questions as is set out in the order paper which has been published on the council's website? I've decided that if members of the public have been unable to attend this evening's meeting in person, and if time allows, I shall read out the question on their behalf as is permitted by the council's constitution. Could I call on the first member of the public, please? And that is Patrick Davies. Could you please address a meeting using the microphone? A reminder that following the response given by the cabinet member, you may also ask a supplementary question which must arise directly out of the original question or the reply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is, how will the council be able to resist applications for significant new housing development on sites not allocated for development in their proposed Regulation 19 document, which may soon be submitted to them by developers who will be able to point out that the council has totally ignored the impending changes to the NPPF in its published document with its failure to reconsider the required housing numbers?
Thank you. Could I call on councillor Todd to reply, please?
Thank you for your question. The most important thing that we can do to properly control development in the Winchester district is to have an up-to-date local plan, and that is what we will be discussing later this evening. We're also moving ahead to submit that plan for inspection in a way that is completely in line with the government's new National Planning Policy Framework, or NPPF. Annex one of the proposed NPPF lays out crystal clear guidance in paragraph 226c and paragraph 227, how local planning authorities that have submitted their local plan for inspection within a month of the publication of the final NPPF should proceed. And the council is following that procedure as allowed by the government to the letter. Once that plan is agreed, the government is clear that in event that our plan reaches adoption with an annual housing requirement that is more than 200 dwellings lower than the relevant published local housing need figure, we will be expected to convince plan making in the new plan making system at the earliest opportunity to address any shortfall in housing need. And indeed, that is the plan of action that we are committed to. We will be following the process required by the government's draft NPPF exactly, and we will be able to demonstrate that in the event of any planning appeal. But in terms of appeal, in addition, because the local plan that we will be discussing later this evening carefully identifies allocations for more than 15,000 houses, this is easily enough to enable development in the upcoming period of 1,099 houses per year in the government's draft target. So we are confident that we will be able to continue to demonstrate a five-year land supply, which would be the basis that a developer might seek to appeal against our failure to allocate. However, even with this new target, because of our new local plan, because of our pipeline of supply, developers will not be able to appeal on this basis either.
Thank you. Would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Could I ask the leader? I was expecting councillor Porter to reply, because that's what it says on the agenda. But nevertheless, can the leader explain to us how because of a swindle, basically, of holding meetings in August, jumping the timetable in order to miss out on what the new NPPF says, how that is going to convince an inspector that you aren't trying to cheat? Can you further explain how Winchester citizens are going to be able to comment realistically on a totally fictitious plan which is going forward? And the document tonight, at the end, it says it was written in June, before the general election, that it's going forward trying to kid local people that it's based on current national policy, which it isn't. Surely, local people are entitled to have in front of them a fair document on which they can make sensible comments so that their views are taken into account when a document is produced that goes to an inspector? Surely, no inspector will be allowed to find this document sound, not least because of the numerous references in it to the old NPPF, which we dead and buried before any inspector can hear it?
Thank you. Leader, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's clear that Mr Davies has not read the NPPF consultation document because it lays out a process that is absolutely clear that if a council has submitted its Regulation 22 plan for inspection within one month after the approval of the draft NPPF, which is not the current National Planning Policy Framework, then the inspector will be expected to inspect it on that basis. What we are proposing is completely consistent with the government's plan. They have made it clear that councils that are towards the end of the planned development process will be able to continue on that basis. That is Labour Party policy laid out in the NPPF, absolutely crystal clear in the two paragraphs that I outlined. We are following that policy. We have sought legal advice to make sure we are following that policy. We've made it clear that we will follow up on, as the term I used carefully, at the earliest opportunity, once our plan has been inspected and approved, in line with the Labour Party policy. But they have been absolutely clear, and their policy is clear, and Annex one is clear, that there is a procedure, and it is the procedure that we are following, that we can, that that will enable us for the plan we propose to be inspected under what is the current NPPF, provided we have the commitment, and I have repeatedly made it, to move at the earliest opportunity to develop a revised plan under the new policy. I think the important thing also is that the inspector ultimately will judge us on the content. They will judge us versus our ability to fulfil the plan, the NPPF that applies to this plan. They will judge us on the quality of our consultation, and we have won awards for it. And they will judge us on the fact that we have taken the decisions openly and publicly in a way that is completely consistent with our constitution. It may be useful at this point, Mr Mayor, with your permission, for Andrew Fraser Urquhart KC, who is providing legal advice to the council and is a planning KC, King's Council, just to confirm that what we are doing is consistent with the rules, not only the current rules, but also the draft rules that the government has put forward for consultation.
Yes, I'm happy for that to take place. If you'd like to clarify that issue for us.
Thank you very much. Mr Mayor, I'm going to ask the council's indulgence that I might remain seated while I address you. I hurt my back rather badly this morning.
Yes, please carry on.
I'm terribly keen to stand up. I also would feel naked standing up without my wig and gown. So I'm grateful to you. I'm going to take just a moment to deal with this because I think it's important that the proper legal context is clearly before you. At the most basic level, planning applications have to be decided in accordance with the adopted local plan, unless, to use the statutory words, material considerations indicate otherwise. The single most important material consideration which is perfectly capable of overriding local plan policy is the provisions of the National Planning Policy Framework, the NPPF, which is the central statement of central government policy. At present, the current NPPF was adopted in December 2023, but the document itself goes all the way back to 2012. The December 2023 NPPF reflected the last vestiges of the planning policies favoured by the previous government. One of its earliest acts of the new Labour government was to produce a draft NPPF which brings about considerable changes, particularly with relation to housing supply. And for the purposes of this authority, it proposes a new method for calculating housing need which will bring forth a very considerable increase in the number of houses that Winchester will be expected to provide in due course. However, as things stand, it is a draft document. It's been provided for consultation. Consultation period closes sometime in September. And one might realistically expect, because it's, I think, a high political priority, that the amended document will be promulgated pretty shortly thereafter. And the options open to the council...
Could I interrupt you for a second? I think your sound has disappeared.
That's unfortunate. I have a booming barrister's voice, so I can use that, but it's a matter for you all and the convenience of your ears. The current policy position provides the council with effectively two options. The first is to pause all the work it has done on the existing local plan and begin the business of trying to work out where the greatly increased number of houses, some 500 additional houses per annum, it's likely to be the requirement, one could stop now with the current local plan and effectively redo the local plan that's proposed to you tonight.
Hang on one second, it seems to have faded again.
Yes, I'm back on again. One could start again, and in order to accommodate this level of likely expected new housing requirement, the amount of work that would be necessary, because a local plan is not simply a matter of, you know, working out where things are to go. There are a series of very complicated and very expensive forms of assessment which must be done in order to provide what's called the evidence base to enable the local plan to be properly considered at the examination. So one could, as it were, start again, but that would be likely to lead to a period of delay of at least 18 months, two years, something of that order. Now, during that time, you would not have an up-to-date local plan, and that has serious consequences in attempting to defend speculative planning applications for residential development and all other forms of development, particularly residential development. And the way that the NPPF works is that if you do not have a local, an up-to-date local plan, the policy balance is tilted very heavily against the grant of, sorry, against refusal of planning commission. It's tilted, it's called in planning terms, the tilted balance. And it makes it very, very difficult, and I say with some experience, to defend applications for residential development. The other alternative, and so therefore if one simply agrees to postpone the work, postpone this local plan, start work on rejigging it to accommodate the new numbers, there'll be a big two-year period when one would expect developers to pile in, and their applications will be very difficult to refuse. And you get to a situation which is sometimes called planning by appeal. In contrast, the other alternative is to move forward immediately with the local plan as drafted, to get it within this window which is provided for in the transitional provisions which councillor Todd has spoken of with respect to the draft NPPF. The draft NPPF, which is still only draft, but it nevertheless, in its transitional provisions, allows local authorities in the position that this one is of having a local plan which is basically ready to go, to submit it immediately to the secretary of state for examination. And then that local plan will be examined by the inspector on the basis, amongst other things, but on the basis of the policies in the old, existing NPPF. And after all the work that's been done by Adrian Fox and his team, I think we're confident that we'd have a very good chance of persuading an inspector that this policy is, sorry, that this local plan is sound under the policies of the existing old NPPF. Now, this has the advantage that you have in place then an up-to-date local plan, and you have in place an up-to-date local plan which for the immediate future would enable this authority to demonstrate that it had a five-year housing land supply. And those are the two things that you need in order to prevent the tilted planning balance coming into effect against you. So it would enable you to maintain control of the planning situation in that interim period. Now, that's not an end of the matter because should you decide to move forward with the local plan tonight, get it adopted, you would immediately have to begin work on the very difficult decisions that will need to be taken to accommodate these new housing numbers. There is no, I'm afraid, getting away from the fact that difficult decisions, unpopular decisions, if I may say so, are going to be needed. But it does give you the protection of an up-to-date local plan in the interim period. So to deal, if I may, with just some of the points that Mr Davies made, the risk of speculative development, of planning by appeal, comes if you pause work on this local plan, not, in my judgment, if you proceed with it. The resolution which cabinet has... The resolution which Cabinet has invited this council to adopt specifically provides ability for officers to add wording to the local plan as drafted, and I think this has already been done, to make clear to members of the public that this local plan, although in theory it goes out for many years, is in fact likely to be fairly immediately superseded by a new local plan which will have to make, as I say, very difficult decisions. But that's the legal and practical background. Unless there's anything else, as I always say at the end of any submissions, unless there's anything else I can help with, that's how the position stands.
Thank you very much for that admirable clarification of the options. Thank you, councillor Todd, and to Patrick Davies for your question. May I remind you that your question and the answer will be published on the council's website with the minutes of this meeting. And you are, of course, very welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting in the public gallery. Now, if I can move on to the next question, can I call upon David Brockless? Could you please address the meeting using the microphone? And a reminder that following a response given by the cabinet member, you may also ask a supplementary question, which must arise directly out of the original question or reply.
Hi, yes. Dave Brockless here. I've got a fairly long question, though probably not as long as the first one. We're halfway through and we've only had the one question. So I'll start. As the local plan is built around the climate emergency, has the council calculated the impact of the measures to mitigate the climate emergency on the climate? I.e., how much change in global temperature in degrees C with the adoption of the Winchester local plan have? If this calculation has not been carried out, why not? Also, has the council carried out a financial impact assessment to include the impact of the measures to mitigate the climate emergency within the plan on the short and long-term finances of individuals, households and local businesses? If this financial impact has been carried out, please explain where this can be found. If it has not been carried out, why not?
Thank you. I'd like to call on councillor Lernie to please respond.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Mr Brockless, for your question. As you indicate, the draft local plan contains significant policies that tackle the climate emergency, which have both carbon and monetary impacts. For example, as compared to the Part L 2021 Building Regulations, the introduction of LETI, the Low Energy Transformation Initiative Standards, is estimated to cut the annual carbon impact for a semi-detached house by 1,316 kilograms per year and energy bills by a third. However, in calculating the overall impact of a local plan which runs until 2040, a number of variables come into play which would make any calculations on carbon savings unreliable. Rate of build-out, the carbon cost of materials, housing typology, resident take-up of sustainable travel options, rate of decarbonisation of the grid and changes to national policy over time will all alter the impact a new local plan will have on climate change. The local plan viability assessment, carried out by an independent company, has covered the costs of all the policies in the Regulation 18 and Regulation 19 stage. Together with the other work used by the council to support the policies contained within the Regulation 19 Local Plan, the report is available in the 2040 Local Plan Evidence Base on the council's website. On an individual household basis, as many of us in this room can testify, the cost of retrofitting a home to a high energy efficiency standard is significant. And retrofitting sustainable travel measures and creating usable green space, both difficult and very expensive. Not only is it more cost-effective to build these measures into developments from the beginning, but the reduced energy costs and better living environment are achieved from day one.
And so the answer. Thank you, councillor Lernie. Would you like to ask a supplementary?
Yes. Yes, please. So it seems the answer is no then. There has been no specific impact assessment on the costs to individuals, finances and households. And there's been no impact assessment on the impact on the climate. So I'm assuming there's zero impact on the climate because you have no impact assessment to say otherwise, which begs the question, why are any additional costs going to households, businesses and individuals? And so I guess that's not a question, it's a statement, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. If you'd like to respond, councillor Lernie.
Thank you. I think the impact on any individual will depend on their circumstances and whether they move into, for example, a new house that's created under this local plan or whether they already live in the district. I have just described the LETI standards, where the calculations on the carbon savings have been done. As I say, those actual savings will depend on the typology of homes that are built in terms of the difference that will make. And as mentioned, also in terms of the difference it's likely to make, it will depend on the decarbonisation of the national energy system. So this is a complicated matter. It would be unreasonable to expect the council to go into that level of detail. What I will say though is that, as we know, all of these costs become more expensive the later we leave them. We are already paying the cost of not taking earlier action on the climate emergency in terms of damage through flooding, increasing need for air conditioning, for example. All of these things are adding up to costs for individuals and businesses. The sooner we deal with it, the cheaper it will be to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lernie and David Brockless for your question. The, your question and the answer will be published on the council's website with the minutes of this meeting. You're very welcome to stay in the public gallery for the rest of the meeting. Could I now call upon Caroline Waller or James Turner for the next question? Right, okay. Thank you, David. Right, we'll move on to the next question. And if there's time, I'll read their question at the end. The next question is from Phil Lee. Is he in the room? Apparently not. Okay, I'll deal with that one in the same way. Right. Could I please call on Stuart Jones, please? If you could use the microphone and if I could remind you that you can ask a supplementary question on the original question or the response.
Thank you, councillors, Mr Mayor. At the cabinet meeting on Monday, last Monday, I highlighted several issues with the July Transport Assessment. The Transport Assessment has no acknowledgement of the significant loss of public transport in the southern parishes in the last seven years. So, for example, in 2017, there were 53 weekday bus departures from Bishopswortham. That figure is now down to 35 and will fall further. There was no assessment of the impact of that loss or on future need. And thirdly, the assessment is out of date and inaccurate with a diagram that actually shows the X9 bus, that service finished two years ago. Although Hampshire is responsible for transport, it does not absolve Winchester City Council of the responsibility to assess that transport provision appropriately against its plan. That's required by the National Policy Planning Framework, specifically to, quote, 'align growth and infrastructure'. These issues mean that the Transport Assessment is flawed and will not stand examination. Councillors, this is an unnecessary risk when I understand your timing for the submission, and I'd encourage you to reduce that risk. The assessment is significant in its flaws and it cannot wait, although I know you have an addendum in the plan. So I ask the council, will you commit to improve the Transport Assessment in parallel with the submission to assess the actual public transport required by the district for sustainable development and to identify the gaps that need to be addressed? Thank you.
Could I ask councillor Lernie to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Mr Jones, for your question and for attending Cabinet the other day. We do thank you for your question and for bringing an error in the document to our attention. This detailed point has been discussed with the transport consultants and the incorrect image showing out-of-date information has been removed from the version of the document that will be published in support of the local plan consultation. The Transport Assessment has been prepared with the oversight of Hampshire County Council and National Highways as highways authorities. It assesses the transport situation and considers what the implications are of the proposed site allocations contained in the plan. The council does have a responsibility to assess the transport provision appropriately in the development of the local plan, but it cannot direct future public transport provision. Going forward, it is considered that the document is fit for purpose, but we encourage comments on its contents, including any mistakes in the forthcoming consultation. As with all other aspects of the consultation, once we have these responses, we can consider if further work is required to support the local plan at examination. Following the adoption of the local plan, as each allocation comes forward, it will need to provide its own Transport Assessment and demonstrate compliance with the sustainable and active travel policies within the plan, which do require the provision of a genuine choice of sustainable and active transport modes of travel, prioritising walking, wheeling, cycling and public transport. That's contained in Strategic Policy T1. While this Transport Assessment might not be the place for it, as a council, we do recognise the insufficiency of public transport in the district, particularly in our rural areas. And we will continue to use what influence and levers we do have to improve services wherever possible.
Thank you, councillor Lernie. Would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Yes, given that very specific statement in the NPPF that the plan should align growth and infrastructure, would the Cabinet and the council consider that a Transport Assessment that does not actually outline what is the total demand of all these houses in the plan, how could that be seen as sound if you don't actually come forward with the actual required amount of public transport in the area? That is certainly not in the assessment. And I'd appreciate any comment about your plans to fully assess the demand so that Hampshire might be pushed to respond appropriately to that. Thank you.
May I ask you to respond, councillor Lernie?
Thank you. Councillor Porter may want to add to this, but I think briefly, the significant issue is that particularly in regards to public transport, the location and quantum of development will define both what is needed to deal with future growth and where that need is going to be. So I think we're in a slightly chicken and egg situation. As is often said, if you want to keep a local school open, sometimes you may have to build a few houses. But personally, we want to build the houses in the right place in the first place as much as possible, not rely on housing growth to provide much-needed infrastructure. But I do absolutely sympathise with the situation regarding the transport in the southern parishes. I came by bus this evening. It's very important to me that that facility is available. And I'm very lucky that we do have a regular bus service where I live. But that isn't the case throughout the district.
Thank you, councillor Lernie. And sorry, Jackie Porter wishes to add to that.
Thank you very much indeed. I fully appreciate what you say. We see the demise of certain bus routes and the start of others. And they're often done on a commercial basis through Stagecoach or Blue Star, whoever. And they watch where the populations are. So one of the purposes of the local plan is to start that debate with those providers of our services, whether it's electricity, whether it's buses, so that they know where we're wanting to provide homes and potential for employment. And they can start to look at where those join up. So it is done and it is part of the process. We do commission that work from Hampshire County Council. And it is time-bound, but it's very recent. But even so, we accept that there are some changes that need to be made to it. But nevertheless, that's the whole purpose of the plan so that we can start planning that infrastructure which the public so desperately need.
Thank you, councillor Porter and councillor Lernie, and to Stuart Jones for your question. The answers to your questions will be published in the minutes. You're very welcome to stay. Now, can I call on parish councillor June Perrins for her question? She appears to be absent. I'll deal with that question later. The next question is from David Baldwin. Parish councillor Lorraine Rapp. If you can use the microphone, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of Wickham and Knoll Parish Council. The council has an allocation of 300 homes, 200 more than larger rural settlements, just to put you in the picture. However, the Knoll settlement hierarchy highlights that the village should not have an allocation and it shouldn't be part of the local plan. There's no preschool, there's no employment opportunities, the convenience and retail needs are not met at all. The hierarchy as published is incorrect and should be six and not 14. The development at Knoll should be a community-led development with significant benefits negotiated outside of the local plan. And the question is, why has Ravenswood Site at Knoll been included in the local plan?
If I could call councillor Porter to reply, please.
Thank you. And just a word of explanation, while I'm not answering them all, you'd be very bored with my voice by now. So, and we work as a team, so this is demonstrating that very point. The Ravenswood Site has progressed as a community-led proposal. And once an S106 is signed, planning permission will be issued. And therefore, we should recognise this in the plan. The planning application has already demonstrated the proposal is acceptable. So if we tried now to make an argument that it wasn't suitable for allocation in our local plan, we would lose that argument at inspection. There are elements of the S106 that still need one agreement before final permission is issued. But to support the community benefits that the planning application highlights, such as securing the open space of the Knoll Triangle and the Water Meadows, we're also confirming them through the local plan policies. If the parish council or local residents submit any detailed comments on the presence of facilities in Knoll at the forthcoming consultation, they can be considered as part of that process. I'm just going to leave it there. Have you any other questions?
Well, I'd just like to add, as there is no community consultation on the sites in Wickham, as they were selected by the Winchester City Council, we request that there is an opportunity for both sites to be reviewed.
That is your opportunity in the Reg 19 consultation. So you make your response in that and then that gets taken to the inspector as complete response. So you have every opportunity. And I hope that you do make those responses. Just going back to Knoll, I think we all recognise that Just going back to Knoll, I think we all recognise that it is a separate community now, and it does have limited facilities in comparison to Wickham, but certainly, that site has already been allocated. And so we look forward to working with you on that site to get that S106 right for Wickham, for Knoll, so.
Thank you, councillor Porter and councillor Rapp for your question. The question and the answer will be published on the council's website with the minutes of this meeting. You're very welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Could I now call on Jonathan Marmont? Please use the microphone.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Can I start by extending my condolences to the family and friends of Mr Lipscomb? My name is Jonathan, I'm a resident of Fairham Borough Council, and I closely neighbour the major development of North Whiteley, in particular, the proposed allocations CU14, 34 and 45. Section 13.7 states, "It has not been possible to achieve the planned 40% housing provision within the development originally permitted at Whiteley for viability reasons." Why is this the case?
Councillor Porter?
Thank you. The level of affordable housing for North Whiteley was set when the planning application was originally agreed in late 2015. This set the level of affordable housing at 25%, provided in the form of 525 affordable housing units on-site and off-site contribution of 17.5 million, based on an independent assessment at the time by the District Valuation Agency, Valuation Office Agency. The 2015 decision is binding on the council, and so it can't be unilaterally increased, even in the local plan process. Even though the level of affordable housing at North Whiteley is far lower than we'd like, I'm pleased to say the council has sought to increase this figure by other means, most recently with the purchase of 54 new Winchester City Council houses in Cobbert Gardens. The failure to secure adequate social housing in Whiteley is one of the main reasons that we have set a new process in plan, in this local plan, that guarantees a set level of affordable housing on greenfield and brownfield sites, so learning by experience.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary question?
I do a short one, please. The new site allocations, according to section 13.7, quote, "will be expected to achieve the full housing..." Sorry, "a full affordable housing policy requirement." According to your Affordable Housing Master Plan Strategy dated 10th of April 2019, the current North Whiteley proposal for affordable housing is just shy of 15%. Reaching the 25% target you mentioned cannot be solved through the small number of additional plots that are identified in this plan, and it requires that the 40 or 25% rate be fully integrated into the remaining phases. What steps can the council take to ensure this integration takes place and ensure that if these new sites are approved, they will not become last-minute add-ons purely created to achieve the 25% target? Thank you.
Councillor Porter? Councillor Todd?
Yeah, I'll answer this one because I read the planning application this afternoon. The 25% that was outlined in the original planning decision in 2015 was split 60/40. 60% of that, i.e. 15%, were the houses that were due to be built in Whiteley, which is why the current level is 15%. The remainder was a cash contribution towards off-site provision. We are not in the... So anything that is covered by the current outline planning permission, we are not in a position to change that housing allocation. If there are any new allocations, new sites made available in that area, then they will, of course, be bound by the policy as it applies to that new site, but what we're not able to do is to retrofit that into the site as a whole. I don't know if we have a planning officer who might be able to provide a bit more perspective in case I've got nothing wrong there, but I think that is an accurate summary. Yes, Mr Mayor, if Mr Oberchek could say a few words.
Mr Oberchek, yes, please, if you could fill in that.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to clarify, so as the leader said, it's not possible to change the percentage that was achieved through the current planning permission, but the new sites, which amount to 200 additional dwellings on top of the existing planning permission, will be expected to require, to achieve 40% affordable housing. And that's why the text that the gentleman read out refers to new allocations being expected to provide 40%. Admittedly, that won't bring up the percentage in the existing site, but that is the best we can achieve, given where we are.
Thank you, Mr Oberchek. Now, we have question number 10 from Lucy Hall. Is Lucy Hall in the room? Right. As time presses on, I will pass on reading out all the questions where the members of the public were absent, and there will be a written answer to those published in due Right. The next item on the agenda is questions from members of the council. Members who have submitted questions will be invited in turn to read out their questions or to refer to them as set out in the papers, and they will be published in that order on the council website. The reminder, our procedure is that supplementary questions can only be done on the original And I would like to remind you that the time allowed for the members' questions is 40 minutes. So, members, in turn, I would invite you to ask your submitted questions as set out in the order paper which has been published. Right, I think we will go on to question number one, and that is from councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The question is as printed, referring to the proposed NPPF changes that could lead to 4,800 or more additional homes being demanded from Winchester District. What's the city council doing about preparing for that new burden on our district housing target?
Councillor Porter?
Thank you. And councillor Godfrey, you've probably heard this answer rehearsed earlier on in the evening by Mr Fraser Urquhart. But as you know, the current proposed formula for housing numbers in the NPPF consultation is not yet agreed, and there's no guarantee the formula will change as a result of the current consultation. In fact, it would be foolish to do too much detailed work until we know that final number. It's clear, though, that it is likely to increase, and so the best first step we can take, and that's what we'll be asking the council to do this evening, is to put in place a local plan with a carefully planned and considered increase in allocation to ensure that we continue to have a five-year land supply against any new target in the immediate future, whilst we commence plan-making in the new plan-making system at the earliest opportunity to address any remaining shortfall in housing need. The second thing we can and we will be doing is responding to the NPPF consultation to ask that some of our policy concerns with the proposals are properly addressed, and we ask you to do the same, too. One question is how national parks are handled, for example. Our district's being given a figure that assumes we can build at scale in the national parks, but the NPPF also makes it clear that that won't be possible. We believe that national parks are a national asset, and their housing demand requires a regional or national response. If there are any points you think you need making, I'll be very pleased to hear them. At some point, though, a number will be agreed, and it's likely to be higher than the one we have now. And what matters then is that we take the same kind of disciplined and considered approach that we've taken with this local plan. We'll be presenting considered options to local people, we'll consult, we'll expect the highest environmental standards, the strong provision of social housing, high-quality design and robust infrastructure, no change in the quality of what we're expecting from development. And we'll work with the people of our district to make sure we have a plan that does our area justice. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Godfrey, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, I do. Apart from perhaps gaining the support of our new MP or stopping the release of the Barren Depot for non-housing activity, or changing certain aspects of Reg 19, you seem to have done none of these, and you could have done so much more. However, I'm more concerned about what may happen as a result of the NPPF changes with our neighbouring authorities, and what you're doing about those in the near future. If we do get our local plan as published submitted, and we avoid for a while the increased housing targets, but Basingstoke and Dean Borough Council does not, and may seem to be behind us in the local plan stakes, how will we be able to resist being forced to cooperate in the delivery of their increased targets, particularly in areas such as Popham Airfield? Thank you.
Councillor Porter?
It's impossible to conjecture what that final figure will be, I think you'll agree, councillor Godfrey. It's very clear that, as I've said just now, we will stick to the same standards, the same high standards that we've always gone to. We have already made objections to our neighbouring local authority, and we're not in a position at this point to know what they intend to do to satisfy their planning requirements. But it's very clear that we do have to have a local plan in place, because then we're in a much stronger position to make the case going forward. I don't believe it's helpful at this point to imagine what Basingstoke are going to be, or in fact, any other local authority are going to do at this point in time. It's impossible to say without having their process being observed by us and them letting us know in more detail what is going to happen. This is also true of Faireham, Havant, all the people that have asked us under the duty to cooperate. So I don't believe it's, at this point, it's useful to have that conversation. We do know, though, we will be putting out strategic issues and options back in the same way we started this local plan process.
Thank you, councillor Porter. There will be written answers, will be published to these questions on the website in due Can I go on to question two from councillor Miller?
They're all... Thank you, Mr Mayor. If the local plan allows brownfield sites to be developed, this will effectively reduce the amount of land available for employment. How is the council going to ensure that enough employment sites are provided in the right locations to cover the extra employment that would be needed for the extra houses that will be built under the plan? And how have they planned to provide enough employment sites given the revised numbers of houses that will be needed to be built under the numbers announced by the Labour Government?
Thank you. Could I ask councillor Thompson to reply, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Miller for your question. As outlined in the previous answer, the new NPPF housing numbers have not yet been agreed. The NPPF is out for consultation at the moment, although we have a positive programme to address them as and when they are agreed, by commencing plan-making in the new plan-making system at the earliest opportunity after agreement of the local plan that is before us tonight. As part of that, we will need to review the necessary level of employment land allocations needed to ensure that employment and housing increase as needed, homes and jobs need to go hand in hand. However, those are not the allocations we are discussing this evening. The allocations we are discussing today are being made under the current NPPF and are based on an up-to-date employment land study, which you can find on our local plan website at localplan.winchester.gov.uk. The plan before us tonight has enough land allocated to meet all of the need outlined in the employment land study.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Do you have a supplementary, councillor Miller?
No, thank you.
Right, thank you. Question three, councillor Horrell, please.
Good evening and thank you, Mr Mayor. As you know, the Conservative group has been fully supportive of the administration's desire to move the local plan process forward. That involves the cabinet last week and the council meeting today. The purpose of the timetable change will be to allow us a more considered approach to the new requirements of the Labour Government to provide an additional 4,800 homes, or indeed, whatever number is eventually published, in the plan period in our district, as part of their drive for 370,000 additional homes across the country. Do you also embrace the housing numbers in the Liberal Democrat manifesto for 380,000 new homes in the same period? And if so, where do you propose those homes will go in our district? Have you written to RMP to recommend the top-down approach to housing numbers proposed by Labour is really unsatisfactory, and that a different approach and methodology should be adopted, which better supports local representations and knowledge to ensure the delivery of the correct housing need in our area? Thank you.
Councillor Todd, if I could call on you?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and thank you very much indeed for your question, councillor Horrell, and thank you for your support for the approach that councillor Porter, my Liberal Democrat colleagues and I are putting forward. Of course, the government's new NPPF is yet to be adopted, and I was discussing the challenges that it may face before it is with one of our three local MPs, actually, one from your party, a week ago, last Friday. And there are a lot of questions that remain unanswered. While Labour's top-down approach to setting targets is pretty much a continuation of the top-down approach put in place by the last Conservative government, the formula they propose is quite different, and I do have major questions about it. The proposed approach doesn't properly account for the impact of national parks, for example, where it includes the national park in our base housing stock number, which is used to calculate our target, but doesn't let us build there. It doesn't allow for any transition period to the new level of development, a matter that's of concern to local authorities of all parties right across the country. And it's not clear, for example, how it reflects the impact of the Lyons Barker review it's going to have as well on new towns. Actually, building on a point that was touched on earlier by councillor Godfrey, in terms of the duty to cooperate, one of the things that the government has set out is that they are expecting the new devolved authorities to take on the role of regional strategic planning. And again, they have not come forward with those proposals, but I can assure councillor colleagues that I am talking to Hampshire's leaders, both the unitaries, the county and the districts, to make sure that we're all talking to each other, we're all coordinating and preparing for how any new regional system might work. So there are a lot of questions. The Liberal Democrats may have put forward one number in their manifesto, your own party put forward a... put forward a higher number as well, and obviously the Labour Party put forward their number. But I think none of us quite knew what the formula was going to be that we were required to respond to, and there are questions to be asked about it. So we will be responding to the NPPF, highlighting the policies we support, and there are many of them, and would want strengthened, the policies where we have concerns, and there are definitely some of those, and asking for some pragmatic adjustments to be made. And we will be asking our MPs, all three of our MPs, to support us.
Thank you councillor Todd. Do you have a supplementary?
Mr Mayor, if I may, and thank you to councillor Todd for his reply. We understand the government are open to suggestions that the proposed standard method may have some unintended consequences, particularly around affordable housing, that they may not deliver what they actually intended. And the government's introduction to the proposed NPPF makes reference to hard constraints. And we understand hard constraints are things such as the National Park. We know that the portfolio holder is due to see the South Downs National Park in September. And my question is, have we addressed this issue with the South Downs National Park, given their rather derisory 350 homes offered to us for the full plan period in the current Regulation 19? It does seem that despite our considered approach and the residents' support in the Main, perhaps except in Wickham, Southern Scotland and South Wandstone, that we have a Regulation 19 plan where everyone's taking their share. But the hard constraint opportunity that maybe the South Downs National Park offers us is a negotiating point for this administration. Would you consider that to be an opportunity for us in this plan process? Thank you.
Councillor Todd?
Yeah, I can't speak for what councillor Porter is going to do when she meets the South Downs National Park, although this is an issue we have talked about, and also with the council's representative on the South Downs National Park. But councillor Porter isn't in a better place to answer that.
May I just say, I'd prefer to use the word dialogue rather than confrontation. I think it's a dialogue we have to have, but it's being made very clear in the new National Park, in the new NPPF, that they regard National Parks as places where housing will not be placed. I'd agree with you, it is a conversation we have to have, because it's very important in calculating any potential new number two, and it's certainly part of the conversation. But it's a dialogue, not a confrontation.
Right, thank you councillor Porter. The answers, as I said, will be, the written answers will be published for the questions or submitted in the minutes. Now, I have a question from councillor Lee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Organisations and individuals have found it challenging to review their Reg 18 inputs and the corresponding responses and comments. I personally have put my own comments in, and on behalf of a couple of organisations. I won't go through the process, which is in the question, but currently the setup prevents a speedy and efficient search, either manually or with an AI mechanism such as ChatPT. And manually can be very daunting. So for Reg 19 and in the future, can this process be improved to allow a more open and quicker and accessible search process for organisations and individuals to find their comments with officers' responses? Thank you.
Could I call on councillor Porter to reply, please?
Thank you. Actually, pretty much every local council uses citizen space to record responses, so I think it's a general issue. Certainly when I make a response, I always copy it and paste it, so I know I've got a copy for myself anyway, and I wait to see what the response is. But I'm just going to say thank you for your question councillor Lee. Yes, the process will be faster and clearer for respondees, as Winchester City Council is not required to provide a specific answer to each response that they receive. They merely summarise the outcome of the responses received in themes. But then, all those responses, so you can be assured that all those responses will be on place on the website as soon as possible, so they'll go on as they're received, and in advance of submission to the inspectorate, and the inspectorate will receive them in total. So it won't be a response particularly to your comment, it will be a response to a
Do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, more of a statement really. I'd thank the officers, I mean, obviously this is a difficult task, but I think blobbing the responses up is difficult then to unpick or track what you've put in. And I just wonder in the future, is it possible to make sure that you break those out? I think that would help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask if Mr Fox might like to respond to this? Because I think perhaps it's a quite technical question, it'd be easier if he responds. Thank you, thank you, Mr Fox.
Thank you, good evening everybody. The main difference, as we outlined with this Reg 19 stage, is that obviously all representations go to the planning inspectorate. But also, at this Reg 19 stage, we have to make the names of the people available too. So that's a key distinction. So it will be easier this time, obviously we had to basically give everybody a unique and identify it, then you had to find that, etc. But at this Reg 19 stage, we have to make sure that names are available. We will not release personal data, but obviously the programme officer will have that personal data ready to contact that person who made that representation, should the inspector wish them to appear at the local plan examination. So like I say, we are looking at it. And just to clarify, we can't put them straight up on to citizen space, but as soon as the consultation's closed, we can make the comments available. So I hope that helps you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Fox. Councillor, question number five from councillor Cunningham, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Even if we can get the Reg 22 submitted and accepted in time by the November deadline, the increased number of dwellings of 4,800 imposed by the new Labour Government will still be hanging over all Winchester residents, just like the Sword of Damocles, as we enter the process for the next local plan due to start next year. Given that 4,800 additional dwellings amounts to two and a half times more King's Barden's, and the pressure that that will put on outward urban expansion, can the portfolio holder advise what impact this is likely to have on the district's strategic local gaps, green belts and public open spaces?
Councillor Porter, please?
Thank you. I might be slightly at the risk of sounding a bit like a broken record at this point, but the government is currently consulting on the proposed changes to the NPPF, which includes changes to the housing number, and the deadline's the 24th of September, and I urge all parishes, public bodies and councils to submit their views to that consultation. Until the results of the NPPF are confirmed, we won't know what the new standard method will be, so I can't predict the effect of any change that that will have on our district. If the mandatory housing numbers do increase, as has been announced, we will need to make some difficult decisions, and areas such as local gaps may well come under pressure in the next local plan. But just to confirm, we don't have a green belt in our district, so there is no grey belt either. Our public open spaces are designated as such and protected in the Main, so their status isn't affected by this, and we've been continuing to protect those as we develop them, as we receive them. And there are strategic gaps and local gaps, but not strategic local gaps. Does that make sense?
Councillor Cunningham, a supplementary?
Not on this one, thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Question number six is from councillor Langford Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can the administration please assure residents that they will focus development for housing on brownfield land rather than allocating our agricultural land for development?
Councillor Porter?
Thank you. We are, in this local plan, concentrating on our brownfield land first as part of that local plan. And that brownfield land has to be built before, or has to start earlier, and then greenfield cannot start until, and won't be approved until after 2030. But this local plan, the subject of tonight's extraordinary meeting, is consulting on a plan for just over 670 homes a year. The proposed changes will introduce mandatory housing targets for all planning authorities. This district does not have a lot of brownfield land or previously developed land sitting unused. Whilst every opportunity is being made to use brownfield land first, very little comes forward for development. I know that your parish is doing, one of your parishes in your ward is doing a neighbourhood plan. Will they be able to put forward brownfield land in that neighbourhood plan, I wonder? Knowing how little brownfield there is, the numbers proposed in the MPPF would undoubtedly result in some agricultural land being developed. That's why we're urging everyone, including parish councils, to respond to the MPPF consultation.
Thank you councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary councillor Langford Smith?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, not on this occasion.
Thank you. Right. Question number seven from councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Significant environmental improvements in the local plan, and one of the policies, Policy CN8, is very welcome, about embodied carbon emissions, which are increasingly becoming a larger fraction of the total carbon emissions from construction, as we ramp down and tackle operational carbon, often now 20% to 50% of the whole life carbon emissions of a new building. Worryingly, the construction industry's knowledge of this subject and strategies and calculations is perhaps inadequate, and I believe the council can help the industry make better progress with benefits to the district by signposting the following. London Energy Transformation Initiative, LETI again, but the Embodied Carbon Primer, which offers supplementary guidance to the Climate Emergency Design Guide for embodied carbon, and then the Environmental Product Design Guides and databases, which are available from the Association of Sustainable Building Products. This can support project teams to design and build and deliver ambitious embodied carbon reductions. And currently, we leave it for developers, as laid out in the local plan, to tell us what they have done without any guidance or targets. We currently don't seem to be insisting on an embodied carbon assessment, it's not currently mandated. So can we signpost the above guides, introduce a mandatory embodied carbon assessment with an annual or biannual rising embodied reduction target for all design and build planning applications? Thank you.
Councillor Lernie, could I call on you to reply, please?
Thank you councillor Lee. This administration is setting the highest possible standards across all areas of carbon reduction in our plan, but unfortunately, there are areas where the research base or other issues, such as the lack of agreed national standards, mean that we cannot move ahead as fast as we would like. Policy CN8 on embodied carbon has been introduced in response to the Regulation 18 consultation. Our consultants advised that as it stands, it has no impact on viability. Making it more prescriptive by introducing percentage reduction targets could lead to a need to relax policy elsewhere, by for example, reducing affordable housing percentages or relaxing energy efficiency standards. We do signpost to RICS guidance, but currently there is no nationally recognised standard or government advice to calculate embodied carbon. Professional bodies in the building industry are calling for the introduction of a consistent methodology and a national requirement for whole life carbon reporting on developments of over 1,000 metres squared or 10 dwellings by 2026, and national targets for upfront embodied carbon emissions by 2028. CN8 will allow us to implement the first phase and collect practical data to support what we hope will be a national requirement for the next local plan.
Thank you councillor Lernie. Do you have a supplementary councillor Lee?
Yes, very quickly, Mr Mayor, thank you very much. As you said yourself councillor Lernie, delays cost, and I'm not sure that it's, would not be appropriate to invoke the precautionary principle by encouraging developers to go a little further. So can I ask, can this be done at the earliest opportunity without having to wait for a full review of the next local plan? Thank you.
Councillor Lernie?
Thank you. While we could be starting some work on this at a relatively early stage, I think realistically we need to recognise that the workload is going to be such that in terms of preparing for the next local plan, we are likely to be relying on, to a degree, on what comes forward on a national basis. I think the big point to make today is that this does have viability implications, and as we know, the viability assessment is one of the founding documents of our local plan. If it doesn't work financially, then we will have to look to make compromises in it. That brings the whole process into looking at doing various bits of work again. So I have every sympathy and wish that we could move quicker in some of these areas, but I'm afraid that we're not there yet, but hopefully before too long.
Thank you councillor Lernie. Question eight from councillor Cunningham, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Littleton settlement gap already has an established sync running through it. Post the Sir John Moore Barracks development, will the portfolio holder undertake to continue the current local plan iteration and ensure ongoing protection for the Littleton gap and the desired Sparsholt gap in particular, please?
Councillor Porter, please?
Thank you for your question councillor Cunningham. The Regulation 19 local plan hasn't reviewed the extent of the current Littleton local gap, which as I said before, isn't a strategic gap, as there's currently a concept master planning exercise being undertaken, which will in turn help form the extent of that gap. I must remind you that currently, some of the barracks buildings within the Wire are actually situated within that gap, so this will need to be reviewed in the concept master plan process. Sparsholt is surrounded by countryside. There aren't any proposals in the Reg 19 proposal that would warrant the introduction of a gap in this location. Local gaps are used to separate villages if they're at risk of coalescence. It would be premature to say anything about possible development in this area, but should development come forward for that area, the subject of a local gap would be considered at that stage.
Councillor Cunningham, a supplementary?
No supplementary, but thank you very much for the answer, thank you.
Thank you councillor Cunningham and Jackie Porter. Right, question nine, councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Policy NE6, flooding and flood risk and the water and environment. It states the local planning authority will permit developments provided they avoid flood, risk to people and property and comply with a long-drawn-out number of issues, which are listed on page 224, which I'm not going to go through. But there is uncertainty that all drainage and flood risks in our vulnerable flood-prone areas will be resolved promptly by Southern Water and the local flood authority. And there is doubt whether any solutions will be fully future-proofed against increasing climate change, extreme rainfall due to cost constraints. So can I ask, can we mandate in this policy rainwater and greywater harvesting, along with other sustainable water management systems such as SUDs, which could be used for new builds or significant retrofit extensions in vulnerable surface and groundwater flooded areas? Thank you.
Jackie Porter, please?
Thank you. Put simply, we can't, because the government hasn't mandated or given us the powers to mandate it. But at present, the use of sustainable urban drainage systems, known as SUDs, is only mandatory for developments of 10 or more. The Conservative government integrated they wanted this to be valid for every property, but the relevant section of the Flood and Water Act 2010, which contained the requirement, was never brought into force. In this proposed local plan, through Policies CN1 and NE6, we believe we have set the highest standards possible within the limits of the current law. So Policy CN1 states that water use- So Policy CN1 states that water use management and conservation, e.g. rainwater recycling and greywater harvesting, has been fully considered as part of the design process. And NE6 is that measures have been taken to minimise the risk and impact of flooding and extreme weather conditions through design of the building and reduce water runoff of SUDs and rainwater gardens. Now, actually, Policies CN1 and NE6 are actually for every development, whether it's small or large, from 1 to 10 and upwards. So this local plan has adopted, once it's adopted, it will mean that we have a higher standard than is currently required.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary councillor Lee, please?
Yeah, very quickly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, we are obviously in a difficult position, and I understand that, councillor Porter. Thank you very much for your response. But I wonder if there's an opportunity to negotiate these spend to save and protect measures with water authorities? Because we all know it takes time, and time means either too much water, water in the wrong place, or polluted. Hydraulic capacity of our water infrastructure, as we know, is unacceptable. So is there a way to take this forward without having to wait for regulation or change in law? Thank you.
Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. First of all, I can say one of the things we have been doing is working with Southern Water and the flood authority to look at how we can make sure our whole systems are more resilient. And that includes not just homes themselves, but extensions, which seem to be one of the main reasons why water ends up in the wrong place. But I also know that councillor Todd has had conversations with PUSH about this, of whether we can use the finance in a different way. And I'm going to pass over to councillor Todd, who's had that direct conversation.
Thank you, councillor Porter, yes. I was at a meeting of PUSH where we were talking to people from Southern Water, the Environment Agency, and I think even we had somebody from Ofwat. And I explicitly asked, are we able to use the planning system to accelerate investment, effectively, you know, through 106 or SIL or any other method, to accelerate investment by the water companies to address some of the issues in that particular context relating to nutrients, but more generally? And I was told in no uncertain terms that even though we might want to, it is illegal, so we can't. The way the water company's finances are set up and the arrangements that are done and how it's managed through Ofwat, although it seems logical that you might want to do something like that in terms of Section 106 or SIL, the guidance I was given at the time was that it's not possible, even if we wanted to do it.
Thank you, councillors Todd and Porter, and councillor Lee for your question. I would remind you that the written answers to these questions will be published in the minutes. We now have reached the end of public questions and members' questions. And I'm going to suggest that we take a break, a short comfort break for 10 minutes before reconvening. So can we stop the recording, please? Unpause the recording, please. Great. Members, the next item of business this evening is agenda item four, and it's the consideration and determination of the recommended minute of cabinet held on the 19th of August. Mrs Kirkman, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Agenda item five is the recommended minute of cabinet held on the 19th of August 2024. And this is set out on your agenda on page 1617 of the supplementary agenda, containing the draft minutes of cabinet held on the 19th of August. Report cab 3462 refers, and this is also included in your agenda pack, including appendices one to five. The recommendations of cabinet are for council to approve the Winchester District Proposed Submission Local Plan, Regulation 19, Appendix 1, and the accompanying Integrated Impact Assessment, Appendix 2, and the Habitats Regulations Assessment, Appendix 3, for publication for a period of six weeks and then for submission, together with the Regulation 19 representations and a summary to the Secretary of State for examination. The recommendations also set out at Recommendations 3 to 5, delegations to officers in consultation with the cabinet member for additional work that may be required after this meeting regarding implementation.
Mrs Kirkman. Councillor Porter, would you move the recommended minutes of the cabinet, please? Recommendations 1 to 5.
I move those minutes, Mr Mayor.
Do you have a seconder?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'm seconding.
Thank you. I understand you will exercise your final right of reply as leader, as is permitted by the Constitution.
I think the intention is that councillor Porter introduces the paper, and I will second that introduction. And then I do have a right to reply at the end under the Constitution.
Right. Councillor Porter, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Cabinet Minute opens the local plan Reg 19 consultation and outlines the stages towards adoption. I believe that the Reg 19 proposal that's in front of us today is a sound local plan, and I'm pleased to recommend it to you. The public has been consulted on the strategic issues and options, the first draft of the plan, and now this is the consultation for the final proposal. All comments received into the Reg 19 consultation will be sent to the inspector. This plan, which has been through a rigorous process to get to this point, and councillor Todd will address the issues raised at the cabinet meeting, but I'd like to reiterate why this is an ambitious local plan for Winchester District. Our council wants to go greener faster. Homes and commercial buildings will be more resilient to climate change, built to high energy standards. They won't use fossil fuels, fuels generate energy to supplement and thus reduce energy use, enjoy good internal air quality with access to green spaces. Our countryside is a valuable asset. This plan demands biodiversity net gain and nutrient neutrality, and makes provision to achieve that for every home. Climate change is bringing a hotter, windier and wetter climate. The plan addresses the risk of flooding and conservation of rainwater for use on site. Our council wants to address the cost of living. This plan ensures that a fixed proportion of the homes will be affordable, not just to be agreed as a developer seeks permission for homes, but set in the plan. Homes will have high energy standards, reducing their running cost. Connecting to existing communities, new developments are planned to reduce the need for carbon based transport, improving options for cycling, walking and wheeling, cheaper options. Day to day needs will be addressed within a 20 minute radius of home. Our council wants homes and jobs for all with the infrastructure in place. We must provide homes to fit householder needs and budgets. I'm particularly keen to make sure that those homes fit everybody's needs. As a single young person, an adult with learning difficulties, young families, someone physically less able, and extra care for older residents are the sort of homes we will need. Many residents live in communities with heritage value. Retention of those leads to a much richer environment for us all. Allocating land for use in Winchester District for development to 2040 provides certainty for residents and for landowners, and most importantly, shows other services how this council's intention for growth will roll out and the standards to which we will do that. The plan enables our public services to plan for the schools, the health services, the transportation, the energy and communication provision, water and sanitation, retail and commercial employment that these communities will use, and much more. Our council wants to use brownfield land first. Our countryside is one of the most valuable assets we have. This plan uses brownfields lands first, only allowing planning permission for greenfield sites from 2030. But we don't have enough brownfield land to achieve the number of homes we need to build to accommodate our population growth. We want to build over 15,500 houses to 2040. So inevitably, some greenfield sites will be allocated. Difficult choices have had to be made. We used the results of the Strategic Issues and Option Consultation as the blueprint to make those choices. So this local plan is consistent and compliant with national planning policy as it stands today. I'd like to thank our officers most sincerely, who have worked so hard to ensure that this is the best plan to 2040 for you and your constituents. With your agreement, our role this evening is to move that local plan into its final stages. I look forward to the debate and ask you to approve the Cabinet Minute and Recommendations. But before I finish, I'd just like to confirm that the Reg 19 consultation starts tomorrow, and it will carry on for six weeks and four days, as we are still a few days into August. And that will be extended to October 13th. All the details are available on localplan.winchester.gov.uk, and the most up to date documents are on there, including, I've just been informed, an updated transport assessment. So from this moment, we're looking forward to this debate now, and I urge you to approve the Cabinet Minute and the Recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Now, are there any questions? Councillor Godfrey?
If I may start with, I've got several, but a very straightforward one. I wonder if a portfolio holder could tell me, how does Reg 19 plan support and supplement the town centre first policy that it replaces to ensure the sustainability of our city and town centres?
Councillor Porter?
I'm going to give an answer, but I may ask one of the officers to help in this particular case. The way in which town centres have been described in the past includes high streets and the way in which the designation is designated to the amount of high street you've got. Town centre first, I'm not particularly familiar with that expression, but if I ask Adrian Fox to help, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. It's embodied in the MPPF about town centre first. It's very much an approach that we've taken in this local plan to support town centres. We know town centres have been struggling as a result of Covid, and we're very supportive of that. We've undertaken a new retail study that basically supports the Reg 19 local plan that's available on the website, and obviously updated all the policies in the Reg 19 plan to reflect the findings of that study. But we are basically continuing with our theme to support town centres as we recognise how important they are. And obviously, that's not forgetting the rural area and obviously the role that obviously those services and facilities offer to the rural community as well. So we very much have embraced and continue to support the town centre first policy that's embodied in national planning policy framework.
Thank you. Councillor Brook, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We're all aware that we are racing through with this at 100 miles an hour and the reasons for that. I wondered if, when the consultation concludes in September, if then a lot of the plans that Labour have proposed as a part of their consultation are then removed. Do we still intend to carry on this super fast process? Or will we revert back to a more stately and civilised pace?
Councillor Porter, please.
Actually, we always were at this pace. This was the timetable that we had. The local development scheme timetable was this timetable. So no, I don't expect us to change. I don't know if the officers have other views, but I certainly, the expectation was that it would be at this timetable. So no, we will not be going back to a stately pace.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Bolton, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have real concerns that the sum total of what are perfectly justifiable and laudable policies, such as the LETI standards as well as others, will in aggregate make the whole plan marginal in terms of the viability assessment, particularly when taking into account the higher requirement for affordable housing and unmet need allocations. This could mean in practice, when it comes to the smaller, wider district schemes, they are unaffordable overall, or at least with the required affordable housing mix. The soundness, as councillor Lerni pointed out earlier, of this plan will come down to its viability in the eyes of the inspectorate. Will the administration agree to hold a member briefing on the updated LPVA based on all these recent changes, so that members have an opportunity to properly scrutinise this key aspect? The July report does state that there will be further updates before the plan is submitted, so this would seem appropriate. If the LPVA or the inspectorate indicate the plan may fall short of the viability test in some way, will the administration adjust their net zero policies or allow the plan to fail? Thank you.
Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. We won't allow the plan to fail, councillor Bolton. But I know that Mr Fox would just like to say a few words on this. He's been jumping up and down.
Thank you. Yes, a key requirement produced in this local plan, unlike the previous local plan, is local plan viability assessment. We've had a professional company basically employed to do that local plan viability assessment. That is what they do. They basically work for local authorities and do it, so it's their bread and butter. They've basically comprehensively looked at all the policy costs in the local plan and basically assessed the viability of the local plan as a whole. That includes looking at the LETI energy efficiency standards. Alongside that, basically, we had consultants basically looking at the cost of introducing LETI and what would be the impact of that on the local plan. And that report's available on the internet as well. That report basically indicated that the introduction of LETI would be about 5% on build costs, but obviously considerably cheaper doing it at the build's cost rather than retrofitting. And we also asked the local plan viability consultants, and again, this is on the internet, what would be the impact if the inspector took the decision that they didn't like the LETI energy standards? What would be the implication in terms of affordable housing policy? And their conclusion was it would probably make a 1 or 2% change to the affordable housing. So it's not going to make a great deal of difference. But all of those research is on the website. Like I say, it's done by a professional company, that is their bread and butter. So we're not intended to basically engage members with that discourse. It's a highly specialised piece of work. I'm sure when you look at the appendices, like me, you'll be going, asking questions, what's this mean, etc. But please trust them, this is what they do. And that's why we've appointed them for a competitive tender process. They've got a proven track record of doing this work for local authorities.
Thank you, Mr Fox. Very well, thank you. Councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you very much. Policy CN1, mitigating and adapting for climate change. This policy is most welcome and is a practical approach to this most important topic. But how can these small allocations for housing development in the countryside that are included in the local plan be reconciled with a reasonable interpretation of this policy CN1 when development on these sites will cause significant negative impact on the local environment, damage biodiversity and introduce significant additional pollution with increased private car journeys, as there are few of any jobs, shops or amenities in these rural areas?
Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. I think that councillor Godfrey may be referring to the rural sites in his own ward. I think that's particularly the point he's making. I don't accept that those sites are going to have increased, an increased carbon footprint. In fact, we know at the moment that those very communities are doing their absolute best to reduce their own carbon footprint. But we do also know that you describe them as not having any employment opportunities or services. And I accept that the health service was not particularly well described, and it has been removed from the list because the website from the local health service actually stated that it was there when it wasn't there. But they have a new bus services starting next week, which are hourly. There is a very good school, which has the opportunity to expand. And so it can take children of all ages, of primary school age. It has a secondary school that has plenty of space too. And there are many opportunities within a biking distance or walking distance to work at Worthy Down or coming into... to work at Worthy Down or coming into sites near Winchester. I don't actually think that they necessarily have to increase the carbon footprint of those communities. You are implying that the people there won't want to live that low-carbon lifestyle, but that's not being expressed by those communities at present who are making their every effort to live a lower-carbon lifestyle for themselves.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Brook, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Coming on to the gypsies and travellers piece, which of course is notoriously difficult to fulfil with regard to the local plan. And I'm aware that the conclusion is that perhaps there will be a presumption in favour of allowing sites that come forward. I'm just seeking reassurances that the sites would only be in presumption of being approved if they conformed with things such as they were within a certain proximity of amenities and that there was pathways so that they could walk to and from and the like, rather than just opening a door for our countrysides to be brought up fields and pitches set up in those areas. Thank you.
Councillor Porter.
Thank you. It's very clear in our local plan, the new local plan, that it's a criteria-based policy. So those criteria are to be adhered to. And that very much is about connection to local services. So it's very important that even if something goes to appeal, that those criteria are exercised.
Councillor Horrell, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you. As those of us who were at Cabinet know, there were many representatives expressing concern about the site allocation of Brightlands and Suttons, Scotland. So my question is, why are we continuing to include that site in the Regulation 19 Plan which has not been consulted on with local residents? At this point, does not have local support. And in fact, you have already indicated is not required until 2030 in the draft plan. When in fact, now we could remove it, consult properly with residents about the available sites in the community at the next plan iteration and still be on time for 2030 implementation. You know the community is committed to more homes, needs more homes. But this would be a great opportunity to ensure that we have support from residents as opposed to a battle on our hands at Reg 19 because they feel so excluded on the consultation to date. Thank you.
Councillor Porter, please.
I'm going to ask Mr Fox to respond to that. I think it's important that you have the technical response to that.
Thank you. I think I said this at the Cabinet meeting. We at the Reg 18 stage included basically all the sites that basically we wanted to allocate. There's no requirement for us to do that in the Reg 18 stage, but we did. We have included obviously the site at Suttons, Scotland in the Reg 19 stage. That is the opportunity to basically consult. We included that site basically after numerous meetings with ward members and the parish council, where basically we had various discussions about sites. We're not kind of blessed with lots of different sites in terms of Suttons, Scotland either. There is limited opportunity about the Sheehan sites that have come forward. What I would encourage obviously the residents and obviously the ward members to comment on at the Reg 19 stage is obviously the proposals that are in the Reg 19 plan in terms of that site allocation. And if obviously there is an alternative site that they prefer, to put that forward at the Reg 19 stage. All the reps at the Reg 19 stage will obviously go to the planning inspector and obviously they will look at it obviously in the rounds. In terms of the 2030 point, it's allocated for 2030 basically because that's what all Greenfield sites in the local plan basically are allocated to come forward. So that we prioritise the Brownfield sites. So it's not the case that basically we're treating it any different to any other allocations. All the other Greenfield sites are allocated 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Fox. Councillor Langford Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In 2015, Denmied Parish Council, having made its neighbourhood plan, requested an Article 4 direction from Westminster to protect the jobs at our business park, Parklands, with the anticipated development potential of between 20 and 30 dwellings. The House of Commons advised that we would need to seek an Article 4 direction through Winchester City Council, which we did. Unfortunately, Winchester advised that an Article 4 direction would be too expensive to pursue, but promised that any office to residential conversion to dwellings would be counted towards any future allocation in Denmied. An officer confirmed this in writing to us in 2021. I have provided that email. At a meeting in Denmied last spring, councillor Porter read the email and advised that it was agreed, that it was quite clear that the Parklands conversions would come off any allocation to Denmied. Officers were present at that meeting. Because Winchester refused the Article 4, despite pursuing one for central Winchester to protect the businesses here, it was agreed that the Parklands numbers would come off of any allocation to Denmied. And it is disingenuous to now say that is not the case and that Denmied has been treated equally. Can the administration please confirm that the Parklands numbers will come off the allocation to Denmied as promised?
Councillor Porter, please.
This is a timing issue, isn't it, councillor Langford Smith? Because those properties were built and in place before the time in which we can count the housing numbers for this local plan. If we'd been talking about 2017 or 2018, we could have included some of those in the numbers. But as we're talking about 2024 and going up to 2040, those properties were not built during that time. That's my understanding and that's unfortunately where we are at the moment. If councillor Langford Smith doesn't mind, if Mr Fox wants to give any other, any additional information to that, I think he can do.
Thank you. I think, again, we've had extensive correspondence with yourself obviously in the parish council about this, so I don't want to repeat anything we've said. But it is, in summary, as councillor Porter outlined, is to do with the plan period. Basically, we're looking from 2020 to 2040, and it's basically when those developments obviously happened. And just to clarify, obviously Winchester Town did have an Article 4 direction. That has now lapsed. The government has been very clear on Article 4 directions that they are not basically, in fact, this was the previous administration, obviously the Labour government haven't said that their intention is an Article 4, but the previous administration were very clear that they didn't like Article 4 directions basically stopping development. And they've said now, actually, Article 4 directions should be the smallest area possible.
Thank you, Mr Fox. A question from councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could the portfolio holder tell me, in relation to HE10, development in conservation areas, how will the acceptability of energy efficiency measures in a conservation area be assessed? Will it remain totally subjective?
Councillor Porter, please.
Sorry, I left that on from last time. We have clear advice for buildings that are heritage buildings and how to improve their insulation and to improve their energy performance. I don't see any reason why we would change that to make something more acceptable. It's a very clear fabric-first design system. But actually, it also is about making sure that all work is done is sympathetic to the building itself. Do you want to, you look as if you're up for another question. Okay. Mr Fox, do you want to talk about that at all? But it's up to you.
Thank you. Obviously, clearly it's important to read the local plan as a whole, but obviously Policy HE14 really deals with obviously how we're going to deal with improvements and alterations to improve the energy efficiency guidance. My colleague from the heritage team has already issued basically guidance, which is available on the website. I know he's giving talks to various organisations about implementing that guidance. But we are very much at the forefront of basically supporting basically the actual alterations and improvements to any designated or improved kind of heritage assets. So hopefully, this is a new reason why basically we need to basically adopt this plan. Because basically we are basically introducing a new policy that basically pushes that envelope further with obviously the climate in mind.
Thank you, Mr Fox. Councillor Lee, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I wonder if I could take us back to the question submitted by Mr Brockless about calculations on housing with respect to Letty and so on. The question I have is, we've talked about residential buildings, but we haven't really talked about non-residential buildings. So that to me, and maybe this is a technical question from Mr Fox, but the BRIAM standard is, I believe, what's going to be used. And to me, it's very much a tick box standard. And I believe it falls short in terms of driving zero-carbon developments. I already mentioned at Cabinet the need to look at the water efficiency standard to be at least 50% level rather than 12.5. I haven't seen that mentioned in the Cabinet minutes. I hope it hasn't been overlooked. But can I ask, is this something that is going to deliver a similar decarbonisation, net zero contribution to Letty? And how does it compare? And is it possible to mandate that space heating demand be met through renewable sources for non-residential BRIAM certified buildings? Thank you.
Councillor Kelsey, please.
Yes, as in one of my previous answers, I think we're in the position here of needing clear standards that we can base what we put in our local plan on. I do agree with councillor Lee's assessment of BRIAM. I think while it's good as far as it goes, it doesn't currently go far enough to achieve the net zero development that we're looking for in the future. Again, I think this is one where until we have clear national standards that we can use, standard methodologies that we can assess by, then I think we're in a difficult position. And certainly in terms of the plan in front of us today, we need to do significantly more work before we can require that for non-residential development. We're already pushing the boundaries with Letty. As we know, the previous government did issue a letter saying it wasn't acceptable. We're pushing on that because we have the evidence base to push on that. Currently, we don't have the evidence base as far as non-residential is concerned. But hopefully, over the next couple of years, we will be able to put that together.
Thank you, councillor Lernay. A question from councillor Langford Smith, please.
I usually am, thank you. And I apologise for now taking the subject matter perhaps more parochial. Perhaps my colleagues opposite are not quite so affected by changes on the local plan, although public speakers earlier did indicate that all wards across the district have their concerns, which I would expect to have been brought by their ward members. Two matters in my ward. The first relates to what seems to be the only settlement boundary change in the whole local plan review, which is not directly related to a specific allocation. And that's a small site at the end of a long residential road, at the end of a cul-de-sac in South Wandstone, which will deliver perhaps two or three houses in an isolated and restricted plot. Despite the opposition of the parish council, five of the six landowners and other residents of the village, this proposal for a change to the settlement boundary is in the plan. Why?
Councillor Porter, please.
My understanding is that there was a review of the settlement boundaries and in that particular case, it was an anomaly. And therefore, it was logical to include that area in the settlement boundary. Does Mr Fox have any other comment? No. Thank you.
Councillor Warwick, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. There's much to commend this plan, and it has a key role in moving the district towards carbon neutrality and indeed the city council's nature emergency that we declared a year or so ago. Within the plan, there are a large number of wildlife sites and habitats which are listed, several hundred, and particularly sites of nature conservation. Within some specific site policies such as BEW1 Tangier Lane in Bishopswaltham and W2 Sir John Moore's Barracks, the sinks present at these sites are specified. But there's no reference at all to the two sinks at Bushfield Camp, which is Policy W5 in my ward, although they're there. And that accounts for 50% of the 43 hectares of this site. So can I ask the portfolio holder that we can have some assurance around protective wildlife sites and habitats? And that that protection will be consistent and thorough across all allocated sites? Thank you.
Councillor Porter, please.
Yes, sink sites are designated, but there isn't necessarily protection of them in their current state. And the quality of those sink sites is sometimes questionable because they're not looked after as they should be. They have been recognised as sink sites because of their habitat at the point in time. My understanding is that all of those sink sites are part of the conversation about the biodiversity net gain of Bushfield and those other sites that you've discussed. We are very keen to make sure that the biodiversity net gain of all of these sites is actually real and not just a paper exercise. So I think you can have the assurance that we will do whatever we can to make sure that sinks are well managed. And that includes making sure that it's in the long-term S106 planning for those sites.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Horrell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At the Cabinet last week, it was confirmed that we're unable to meet the requirements for gypsies and travellers in the current Reg 19 plan. Not unlike other authorities, but that is our position. It has been a matter of concern for residents in our ward that the Carousel Park site has been very unsatisfactory for many years and indeed a major focus for the planning department in terms of a formal appeal, which was decided a few months ago. And with a new approach to that site due if everyone conforms to the requirements of the inspector from October. So can I therefore very clearly confirm that we will definitely not intensify the use of the Carousel Park site over and above the inspector's recommendations from the appeal? Although you have given yourself the opportunity to do so in Policy H14, please can you assure us that you will not exercise that opportunity at Carousel Park? Thank you.
Councillor Porter.
I understand your concerns because the site is due to be going from nine pitches to, or nine plots, to over 50 pitches and probably many more. I can't confirm that at the moment that you're asking, because if appeals go forward, we don't know what an inspector would say. But I'm going to ask Mr Oberchek if he'd like to make a comment on the point in general, which I think is what you're seeking as well.
Thank you. Yes, certainly it's not the council's intention to intensify that site. There is a separate policy that allows for intensification of traveller sites subject to various criteria. So the people on that site may make a planning application and argue for that, but it's certainly not something we encourage, it's certainly not something the council is promoting. And, you know, obviously, we had hoped for a better outcome than what we got through the appeal. We certainly wouldn't intend to make things any worse through the local plan process.
Thank you, Mr Oberchek.
Thank you.
Right, councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very kind. There has been much discussion at Cabinet and elsewhere about the lack of consultation on the southern Scotland Brightland site, SUO1. That allocation covers the whole 5.28 hectares of land just on the edge of a village, which is enough for 120 or more homes, although only 50 to 60 homes are included in the REG19 plan. But 120 is what was indicated in Masheela and is planned for by the developer. Why is the area of allocation not smaller to restrict the number of homes so valuable rural land is not wasted by inappropriate density, as it would be a proper extension to a village which is a conservation area? Thank you.
I may refer to Mr Fox just because, for a technical response, but I am very aware that this site was identified as having possible archaeology on the site. There was a paper written, and we understand that there was something found there, and it's got a high priority for archaeological investigation. So therefore, it's unlikely that it would be coming forward for 140. And I'm just going to check that, is there anything else Mr Fox wants to say? But that's the reason that it's been set at 60 and not a larger number. And we don't need houses, that number of houses there either.
Thank you. It's a very important point councillor Godfrey made. The whole thing is, as I say, there's maybe archaeological potential on the site, but also there is the opportunity, obviously, because we know basically that you need to do a hydrological study to basically look at subs and how basically that can be incorporated into the site. We also know, obviously, there are issues to do with noise, so basically we'd need to make sure that we obviously have appropriate setbacks from the road. And it gives that better breathing space and hopefully that rural look that we're looking for. We're certainly not looking for 140 homes in that site because it would be out of character with the area. So basically, by looking at the density, looking at the site, and it's a way that we deal with all sites, basically it's to allocate the whole site. We're doing that with Sir John Moore Barracks as well. Basically, we allocate the whole site so basically you can bring forward these other benefits to the site, such as the basically the subs and things like that, and the enhancement, obviously, to the environment and things like that. They've got B and G to provide for as well. So like I say, and that, those criteria are all set out in policy SUO1.
Right, councillor Chamberlain, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We heard during the public session, the assertion that Winchester City Council had determined the local plan site allocated for Wickham. Please could the portfolio holder confirm what dialogue has been had with the parish council on the two sites that have been allocated for Wickham?
councillor Porter, please.
Yes, I haven't had those specific conversations, so I'm going to pass to the person that did.
Thank you. We made it very clear to Wickham Parish Council when basically we were doing the REG18 local plan that we may need to revisit basically the actual settlement itself in light of representations. And that's exactly what we did. We as officers went out to meet the parish council and basically set out basically what the representations had actually said, and basically our approach that we would need to take forward. So we entered into that dialogue, we invited the parish council to do a consultation on basically the sites. They actually declined to do that consultation, so we were left with no other opportunity but to actually do our own officer assessment of those sites. Once we did that site assessment, we had two teams' meetings with basically Wickham Parish Council to basically go through the sites. And I can say that basically when we had that conversation, the outcome of that conversation was, well, if you had to pick two sites, they were the sites that we would have picked. So that's where we went forward with.
Thank you. councillor Cremoison, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd also like to thank councillor Godfrey for his encouragement for this side of the House to ask a question. We've been hearing, we've heard through the public session, and we've heard from a member's session earlier, and now we're hearing now a lot of questions which are really about the content of various policies or allocations of the local plan. Now, I've been, I've played a role, participated in all the previous opportunities at the different stages that we've gone through so far, and I've asked questions, and I've been given great answers and so on. And I know that our parish councils in our ward have participated too, and they've asked their questions, and they've been well supported in that process by their ward councillors. And here we are. So to me, there's been plenty of opportunity for most of these questions, not all, there's been some really good ones which have come through, to raise these at previous stages in the process. My question of the portfolio holder is, what is the fundamental choice we're being asked to make today, the decision we're trying to make? Are we negotiating detailed changes in policy or allocations, or are we here to make a decision about moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are here to make a decision about going forward, moving forward, but part of the very legal, very long local plan process is to go out to a consultation, a REG19 consultation on our final proposal, so that everybody gets the chance to make their comment about anything in that plan they wish to, absolutely anything. It is a process which is very open. At Winchester City Council, we have a statement of community involvement. We make it very clear that's our minimum offer, not our maximum offer. I know that the documents are sitting in cars, ready to go out tomorrow, should this be approved. It's very important that everybody has the opportunity to have their say. For that reason, we've extended the length to six weeks and four days to October the 13th. But the point of that is that when we get those responses in, they should not be, if we have got it right, they should be reflecting the sort of things we've heard already, the sort of things which we believe we've dealt with already, the sort of conversations we've had with the Planning Advisory Service. We've had regular meetings with the Planning Advisory Service about our local plan as it's been developing. So we believe that this is, today you are putting the stamp of approval on going out for a REG19 proposal, which then means we can go forward to the inspector for an inspection. And then from that, we'll have a local plan where the planning committee, and many of you are on it, will actually be able to have a series of policies and allocations that you know that you'll be working towards. And you'll have the guidance in that plan to do so. Is that enough councillor Cremoison?
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Porter. I would like to move on to the debate, but I see councillor Horrell has a question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As you know, I have a passion for central Winchester redevelopment and feel some ownership of the supplementary planning document, which we know was up for discussion months ago. And of course, with the acceleration of the plan, it would be helpful for all of us to understand the status of supplementary planning documents as we go into the Regulation 19 consultation, because not everyone will understand that they are, in effect, likely to fall unless there are other changes made. And I particularly raise that, if I may, Mr Mayor, with the portfolio holder, because I really don't understand at this point why we would be developing on green fields in the current plan when we have the opportunity on our own land to ensure that we allocate appropriate space for housing, which we know we need and will need more of. We already have some in the central Winchester regeneration site, but we also could take the Bar End Depot site, the River Park leisure centre site, if it wasn't for the old terminology of affordable housing. So I'm just questioning, please, supplementary planning document status as we move forward on this current timetable. Maybe our QC can advise, thank you. And also, why we're not actually reconsidering some of our other regeneration sites so that we use previously developed land as a priority before green fields? Thank you.
councillor Porter, please.
I'm going to start on this one, but I may seek some support from Mr Fox. In the Winchester site allocations, we have a number of sites which are all in central Winchester, not in the central Winchester section you're talking about, but in Winchester itself rather than in the district. There are a great number of those. We have to be realistic about the time in which we can get them to a point of regeneration. And so those numbers there are realistic numbers and not over ambitious numbers, can I say, for that reason. I'm also going to just ask Mr Fox if he'd just like to comment on the matter of the densities that we're talking about and the additional sites. But also councillor Todd is also involved with the assets of the city council, and he may like to comment on that too.
I might do.
You might? Shall I, Mr Fox go first and then Mr Todd afterwards?
Thank you. I'll defer to Andrew, our KC, regarding the status of SPDs. But in terms of obviously the regeneration sites, the key thing is obviously the local plan has got to be based on evidence. The evidence before us basically is based on a lot of the work you did obviously on the SPD in terms of the site capacity of central Winchester regeneration. We have no other information at this stage to deviate from that. I can't just basically increase that number because I'll be challenged on it. Developers will obviously look at those numbers very closely. Obviously, in terms of River Park, you mentioned that, regrettably, we can't look at that for housing because it's in a flood risk area, so we can't have that for housing. And Bar End proposals basically will be coming forward basically early, basically in the next couple of months, where obviously we will be looking in detail basically the developer partner and obviously the actual capacity of that site. So they are in hand. But I'll defer if I can to Andrew to talk about the status of SPDs.
Thank you. You'll forgive me if I give you a legalistic answer, but I'm afraid I'm a lawyer and it's all I can do. I mentioned at the beginning of my last spiel that planning applications had to be determined in accordance with the development plan, the adopted development plan, unless material considerations indicated otherwise. An SPD is not part of the adopted development plan. It is, clues in the title, a supplementary document which is capable of having, usually has, the status of being a material consideration. So a local planning authority must consider what's in an SPD, and they must have reasoned grounds for not following it if they choose not to follow it. But it does not carry the same status as a development plan document. And as such, an SPD cannot go beyond or contradict policy which is in the adopted development plan, because it falls below it in the hierarchy. Now, in the context of an urban regeneration type scheme, which broadly speaking, central Winchester is, the central policy for what is to happen on that land is set by the adopted development plan. And a supplementary document can only provide additional guidance as to how the policies set out in the adopted development plan are to be carried through. And if there are good reasons when an application is made for not following to the letter or indeed at all a supplementary planning document, then that may well be the case. And the local planning authority is entitled to decide to not follow the advice that's set out in a supplementary planning document, and it can do so much more readily than it can decide to ignore the policy requirements of the adopted development plan. Now, in practical terms, the new local plan contains policies for central Winchester, and it contains a requirement that the plans which come forward should seek to be in conformity with the current SPD. But that is only a policy requirement, and if there are good reasons not to follow the SPD for some particular reason, then the local planning authority can decide to do that. But for present purposes, the SPD is there, it's a material consideration, and the council would need good reason not to follow it. But that's not to say that such good reasons might not, might well, might well exist.
Thank you. Right, I think we will call a close on questions and move on to debate, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think we would all agree that the district must be put in a very strong position, and so that is why we must develop this local plan before the new government's deadlines. I think we would all agree with that. I firmly believe this is the right plan for our district, and may I take this opportunity to thank Mr Fox and the officer team who have worked so hard to deliver this local plan. All questions, I feel, that have been put by councillors and by members of the public at scrutiny committee, cabinet, and again this evening, have been, I feel, answered and dealt with extremely well. So I personally endorse this plan and our approach going forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clear. councillor Godfrey, please.
I'm grateful to, well, Mr Mayor for calling me, and to councillor Cremoison for acknowledging my generosity. Maybe he got clearer answers than I did, or my parish council did, or perhaps we didn't get allocations foisted on your parish's very last minute. What I can say is I would be kicking and screaming if I was him about KW2. I don't think that's a very good idea at all, and I think you should be fighting harder for a better outcome for your ward. That's up to you. I welcome many aspects of the REG19 version of a revised local plan. In places, it retains and strengthens some of the positive aspects of the current plan, and also introduces positive measures to make Winchester better. I particularly applaud the focus on improving biodiversity, protecting the natural environment, reducing the risk of flooding, retention of settlement gaps largely unchanged, support to make our city and town centres more sustainable, and a more flexible approach to delivering to make our city and town centres more sustainable and a more flexible approach to delivering much needed affordable housing. I do share the concerns of some of my colleagues that requiring too much from developers will make too many schemes unaffordable. The NIMBY-like attitude shown by, apparently shown by the South Downs National Park Authority will make that affordability problem worse as the demand for homes will grow but the park will refuse to release land for a development, even the obvious sites that are previously developed. There are some areas of particular concern that I will encourage comment on during consultation for consideration by the planning inspector. At the front and centre of the plan is policy CN1 mitigating and adapting to climate change. The policy is welcomed as it sets down a clear aspiration for us all to seek notably that carbon emissions have been considered as part of the identification of sites and encourages people to use more sustainable forms of transport. And yet, this strategic policy has been ignored when allocating most of the new sites for development, not just in those in my ward. Almost all the new housing allocations in this plan are on greenfield sites in rural areas. These developments will create unnecessary increases in carbon production, generate pollution and cause negative environmental impacts. New developments in rural areas will lead to more people having to commute in private cars to work, increasing traffic congestion as these new residents go to shop, to school and to almost all aspects of their lives as these rural sites are not close to where people want to go. These sites will use land that has not been previously developed so the character of a countryside will be changed and not for the better. Biodiversity will suffer regardless of how much biodiversity gain is claimed. A new housing estate on rural fields will not have more habitats or more wildlife or more of anything except buildings and human waste. These small developments of 40 or 50 homes will not bring any new infrastructure or amenities to these villages nor any contributions towards public transport. They are too small scale to attract grants or subsidies and the developer contributions will be minimal as viability on small sites will always be marginal at best. allocations like SUO1 in Sutton Scotney and SWO1 in South Wanston have many well documented problems to make delivery difficult: isolation, access, drainage, electrical supply, damage to habitat, flooding, archaeology and still no consultation. All these problems should be sorted out before deciding to destroy the countryside, particularly when the council is not making full use of a brown field site within existing settlements. Thank you.
councillor Bolton, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It wouldn't be the same if I didn't mention my particular parochial problem which is the South Downs National Park. As you know, I'm pleased councillor Porter to hear that you're meeting with them in September, I think you said. I would simply encourage you to use this as an opportunity to press the severe democratic deficit that there is with the local ward councillors within the South Downs National Park. I think this is a real opportunity for you to try and champion that and achieve better communication because there is no involvement with the ward councillors and I think a more meaningful, rather than just loose words around collaboration, but a more meaningful working party that's made up of the ward councillors amongst others to try and work out what is failing within the South Downs National Park with regards to their delivery of housing allocation. It is so poor and it's getting worse that minds need to come together to try and help them resolve it and we'd like to do that because there is opportunity there. It's not all the Garden of Eden that can't sustain some housing and affordable housing is hugely important in the countryside, as you know. So I would just encourage you to really press those points. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Morris, please.
Yes, very briefly, in comparison to the Conservatives. I've had a few emails from residents concerned about the Sir John Moore barracks, particularly with regard to nature conservation, the woodland down there. And so, reading through the local plan, section policy W2 is my favourite part of the document because it sets out clear and specific guidelines for that development, particularly now as it's entering the master plan stage, which will be very, very useful in allaying any of the residents' concerns because I think it sets out a very firm framework which means that that will mitigate any sort of negative impact in terms of nature conservation, flood risk or settlement gaps. So I commend this local plan.
Thank you very much. councillor Rutter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the Chair of the Planning Committee, I understand better than most the potential danger of planning by appeal or the tendency of some developers to attempt to exploit any loopholes or questions over the legality of our local plan. Therefore, I endorse wholeheartedly our new proposed local plan. It is a well thought through and indeed inspirational document which addresses all the idiosyncrasies of our current local plan and puts the issues of climate change and the nature emergency front and centre. This plan takes a no nonsense approach to planning, requiring more affordable homes, prioritising brownfield development, supporting local communities with necessary infrastructure and safeguarding our countryside. Frankly, the sooner we can cite our new local plan when considering new applications, the better. So please join me in wholeheartedly supporting these proposals today. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Wallace, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It seems like every single week, at some point during the week, I'm asked by a different local resident, why aren't there solar panels on every property that's being built? And not just a token one or two but a whole roof full of panels. And at a time when climate changes happen even faster than most predictions, it seems like an obvious step. The UK currently has the least energy efficient housing stock in Europe and yet even now we are still building homes that will require retrofitting, not just in Winchester but across the country. We continue to build houses without solar panels, without high quality insulation and still with fossil fuel powered heating. Across the UK, only 45% of homes currently have adequate roof or loft insulation and only 35% have cavity wall insulation. Most people underestimate the impact energy efficiency has on their household bills. Improving home energy efficiency using just some of these measures can save residents over £1,000 per year and that's £1,000 each and every year going forward. Implementing energy efficiency measures when houses are first built is the cheapest and easiest way to insulate homes. Not only that but building more energy efficient homes means more people will be able to live in warm homes whatever the weather. Similarly, the cheapest and easiest time to install renewable and low carbon energy schemes such as solar panels and heat pumps is upfront. Technologies are proven and well established and frankly, many of our residents expect us to require these measures already. It's shocking that at present the council has no or very limited powers for requiring developers to implement low carbon energy solutions. But it's not just the energy used in heating and cooling a home that's important, we also need to consider the emissions involved in building a home. For the first time, the proposed local plan recognises embodied carbon. That is the greenhouse gas emissions embodied into a development from the manufacturing processes and transportation of construction materials. Going forward into the next local plan, this needs to be an area of focus so that the amount of embodied carbon in building projects is reduced. There are lots of opportunities in this area for forward looking developers. Moving on to other areas of the draft local plan, earlier this evening, we've heard questions from the public about sustainable transport and active travel. These are both areas that will need increased focus as we transition to more sustainable travel solutions. On flooding, we know that problems are increasing every year as our climate becomes warmer and wetter. We cannot ignore this issue when we see flooding occurring across the district from Winchester High Street to the Meon Valley and other areas besides. While Winchester is not the lead authority and other players such as Hampshire County Council and Southern Water have a critical role to play, the council needs to do more to support our residents in achieving long term sustainable solutions. On biodiversity and the natural environment, it's good to see recognition of the role that nature based solutions has in helping us to address some of these issues. Again, this is an area that would be good to see expanded on going forward into the next local plan but it's good that it's made it into it this time. On affordable housing, it's good to see the requirements for relatively high levels of affordable housing. The key on this issue is to ensure that requirements are not weakened under pressure from third parties. Too often, we've seen developers given the green light to reduce the amount of affordable housing in developments. The council needs to remain strong to this commitment if we are to deliver on the council goal of homes for all. And on creating a vibrant economy, supporting our local businesses must form a key part of any plan going forward.
Thank you. Have you...
Just got a little bit. Overall, the Reg 19 local plan makes good progress over the current local plan in a number of areas, including raising the bar on carbon neutrality and energy efficiency. There are opportunities for further improvements. My colleague councillor Lee has suggested several areas where the regulations could be strengthened and I hope his suggestions will be considered. At the same time, we must keep moving forward. We cannot leave our district with an out of date plan and vulnerable to making planning decisions by appeal. So I'll be supporting this plan moving to the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you. I would remind that you're limited to five minutes speaking. councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, we, the Green Party, as you've already heard, support the acceleration of our current local plan to public examination. So I'm not going to repeat everything about what's been said about speculative planning, free for all and planning decisions by appeal. We do not want that. An updated, more versatile, sustainable local plan that not only supports our economy and communities but also addresses the climate and nature crises equitably to our highest standard is needed sooner rather than later. Advancing the plan to earliest adoption is really important given the forthcoming 62% increase in government mandated housing numbers. And if, just to remind us all, that means at least about 1 million tonnes of additional carbon emissions which will be created as a result of those changes. So the sooner we get on with our higher standard plans and then work out how we treat those in the future, the better. I think I'd also like to urge and ask councillor Porter, when visiting the South Downs National Park, to consider with councillor Lernie what was said at Cabinet and that is, I think there's a need to have a comprehensive understanding of ecosystem services impacts during place making. Joined up assessments of provisioning, regulating, supporting and cultural services will be absent which could only undermine already challenging mitigation adaptation efforts in planning for the climate and nature crises for current and future developments, especially the painfully increased housing numbers to come. And I think there's nothing more that would suggest there's going to be a high cost by requiring all planning applications across the whole district to include a statement detailing how development proposals impact ecosystem services, both positively and negatively. It's essential. And I'm sorry to disagree with councillor Lernie but I think our current approach is okay but I think it's suboptimal because it's fragmented and I think we could do well to adopt the South Downs National Park policy SD2 or similar because it is a clear and easy adoptable model which we could use and I think it might even strengthen our conversations with South Downs National Park. So can I ask for that to be considered? Otherwise, thank you, Mr Mayor. I fully support this local plan going forward. I look forward to Reg 19 and some of the suggested amendments that I've made tonight that might be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lernie, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We are currently working with the local plan agreed after inspection in 2013 based on a draft agreed in a similar extraordinary meeting to this in 2011 which a couple of my colleagues will, I'm sure, still remember as that one finished at 2:25 in the morning and I'm certainly hoping we don't end up there this evening. The current plan is way out of date in its thinking. Many of its policies have been superseded by national legislation or guidance and while the focus tends to be on housing numbers and land allocations, they are just part of the plan that we are proposing for consultation. There are over 60 policies in this plan outside of the Homes for All and Land Allocation chapters. It is vital that we get the new policies in place which will lead to us building homes that are more energy efficient, cheaper to run, on developments that provide ready access to green spaces, services, education and employment without the need or at least minimal need to use a car. This plan reflects our aspirations and targets for a greener district and as can be seen from the response to the Regulation 18 consultation, there has been strong support for this direction of travel. The new plan strengthens policies on climate change, biodiversity, sustainable travel, air quality and renewable energy. These are significant changes compared to our current plan and setting these policies in place now will help us in our decision making on future site allocations, allowing us to pick up many of the comments that have been made by fellow members this evening. And this will make a transition to the increased government housing numbers. It will allow us to do that in a way which will not lose sight of what's important to us in our district and will keep it within our control. So I very much welcome the support we've received from fellow members this evening and am pleased to be able to fully endorse moving forward tonight.
Thank you. councillor Williams, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'd just firstly like to echo the comments from councillor Rutter. As a member of the Planning Committee as well, we are chomping at the bit for this new local plan for our decision making process but I wanted to comment on a specific policy if possible. I'd like to comment on the Tollgate site in Bishopswaltham as BW3. This site was carried over from the previous local plan but I'm pleased that, following meetings with officers, councillor Todd, the parish council, the Bishopswaltham GPs and the ICB, that this Regulation 19 plan has been amended from the Regulation 18 plan to allocate this site as a future potential new GP surgery. This will ensure that the GPs, this potential will ensure that the GPs can continue to work with local councillors to work towards a much needed facility for Bishopswaltham, Durley, Swanmore, Uppam, Waltham Chase and even beyond our district boundaries to Ballygreen and parts of Botley and Haunton Heath. Infrastructure that is much needed following new developments in our area to which I welcome this local plan and look forward to the next one.
Thank you. councillor Horrell, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you. As we said previously, the Conservative group are supportive of moving forward at speed. I think we're all agreed that we do not want to be in a position that we don't have a valid local plan and obviously that process must start urgently to be within the changes in government policy. I wanted to also endorse councillor Cleer's comments. I think the officers have deserved our thanks for their persistent work. They continue to smile despite all sorts of twists and turns and we... They continue to smile despite all sorts of twists and turns and we appreciate your guidance and your support to get us to this position this evening and to be able to submit a plan at speed. Also to say thank you for all of the opportunities that we've had over recent weeks and months to address questions, because on the multiple occasions we've had those conversations, answers have evolved and further questions have come up. We've sought clarification and I think that has been really helpful. And it was very good this evening to hear from the public again that they had a further opportunity to raise their concerns with us. And I think that can only be endorsed, that transparency is important. I'm only sorry that councillors didn't get a direct notification about the advancement of the public speaking registration time last week and it was buried in another document, but we can't have it all. And indeed, I hope the portfolio holder will take on board, as they advance the plan, that although we're keen to move forward, Regulation 19 is still that opportunity, as she has clarified many times, for the public and ourselves to continue to comment and add and amend, to correct if appropriate those elements in the plan, because we all know it isn't quite perfect and that we would like to see some modification to that. So I encourage everyone, particularly listening online and members of the public and parish councils, to make your comments known. You need to speak up at this point to ensure that not everyone is in agreement that the plan as currently written is perfect. And so I hope you will take on board, as the portfolio holder, those concerns that have been expressed by some of the representatives over the recent weeks and months. And particularly where we're developing master plans in the district. They're coming forward for Sir John Moore, for other developments. People are still uncertain about what that will bring, even though they're referred to in the document. And so those master plans, as they evolve across the district, we need to take people with us in our thoughts on this important piece of work. And like many councillors, I'm sure, as soon as we put this document down, we'll be delighted to support the next one, given that we will have some very important decisions to make if the current Labour government have their way in terms of additional homes and how that might be developed for us in the Winchester district. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your patience this evening and hope that we can continue to have the open and honest dialogue that we've had for the development of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I call on councillor Porter to sum up, please?
I'd like to move an amendment. It's far too early. You heard it, 3:25. That's the target.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was to amend, make a motion under Rule of Procedure 20.9.4 to refer back for reconsideration by Cabinet, part of Recommended Minute 1, that being Winchester District Proposed Submission Local Plan, Regulation 19, Policy D6, Brownfield Development and Making Best Use of Land. The policy does not optimise the use of previously developed land within existing settlements, so requiring greenfield sites in rural areas of a district to be allocated for development in this plan unnecessarily.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may assist, we do have hard copies to circulate to all members and perhaps a shorter German to allow for that to be considered would be appropriate.
Right, we'll have a shorter German, please.
Sorry, I reserve my right as well. Thank you.
Debate on this amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I accept the logic for advancing the timetable for a revised local plan, but the response to the questions that councillor Langford-Spiff and I put earlier show how little this administration is really doing to protect our natural environment against the threat of inappropriate development. Now is the time to act to protect the countryside, the habitats and wildlife and beautiful green lungs of our district before this massive change on housing targets is imposed on us. Once we allow building on previously undeveloped land, it can never return to its pristine state. It is lost. We may be able to avoid allocating land for these 4,800 extra homes in this review, but we cannot avoid it in the next review. The council needs to take every step in this version to prepare for that liability by making some small but important changes to the Reg 19 version of the local plan before it is sent to the Planning Inspectorate. Specifically, Policy D6 prioritising the use of brownfield land. This policy is very welcome, but almost all the sites allocated for new housing development is on land that has not been previously developed. Yet brownfield land that is allocated in Reg 19 is not allocated for housing development or certainly not wholly allocated. The council must make full use of the available brownfield land before allowing the destruction of the countryside. Land at the Bar End Depot, on the Station Approach site, on central Winchester regeneration area, at Royal Hampshire County Hospital and the River Park Leisure Centre site are allocated for mixed-use or non-residential development. Most of these sites are mainly owned by the city council, so the council can decide to use their land for housing and to protect the countryside from unwelcome development that the government want to impose. This amendment will allow Cabinet to reconsider how these sites can maximise their use for housing. This should lead to development of hundreds more homes on brownfield sites within existing settlements and also ease the pressure on other sites during this current review of the local plan. We may not be able to protect these greenfield sites forever against government dictates, but we must delay and manage the harm to the environment. If we truly value our countryside and all the natural beauty it contains, we must reduce the amount of land that we concret over. Today, we cannot say that all previously developed land that is available has been allocated for housing. We must not allow developers to take the easier and cheaper course of building on the fields. Rather than allowing the Bar End Depot, for example, to be used for a new car showroom or yet more coffee shops, this amendment seeks to rethink how that development could include a majority of housing. Most facilities that residents need will be within walking distance, so less traffic. This step could move more housing into appropriate areas of a district and allow the rural sites that will cause more environmental damage than any benefits that they bring to be removed from a plan. At the next review of the local plan, when we will probably have to allocate land for at least 4,800 extra homes, these greenfield village sites would still be available, but maybe we will decide with our residents that they are not the best place to build. I ask you to support this amendment and ask Cabinet to think again.
Councillor Todd, please.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Mayor. We will not be supporting this amendment tonight. The plan that has been put forward does a thorough job of using brownfield land within our site, within our district, and using it appropriately for the nature of the local plan. The Conservative Party really are in a mess on this one. On the one hand, they're telling us that we mustn't delay. They're supporting our proposal that we don't delay in order to ensure that our local plan remains under control. But here we have a proposal for a major reworking of allocations within the city implicitly to have a delay. There is no... It is impossible for us to do what you have highlighted here today, because if we take on the scale of delay proposed by the Conservative Party, we cannot achieve it within the timetable that's outlined for the fast process for a local plan and we go straight to the higher numbers that have been put forward. As was outlined earlier by the KC, we move to the second process, which is a slower one, leaves us unprotected for a long period of time and means that our planning system gets out of control. So they want us to delay, but not to delay. And when it comes to central Winchester, the implication is that we're not already thinking about having a strong allocation of housing on there in line with the SPD, but it appears to be Conservative policy that we scrap the SPD and we make it housing only, that we close Iceland and Poundland and turn everything in that central area into housing. Well, is that what they say? Because on the other hand, we have councillor Horrell telling us that we need to protect the SPD, which asks for mixed-use development. A complete muddle, no coherence at all, very similar to what we saw under the previous government and the previous administration. And when it comes to the Bar End Depot, supposedly a magical number of houses that can be built there, except it is overwhelmingly allocated for housing. The one piece of commercial development that could be removed is the proposed convenience store, which we have absolutely no intention of removing. It's something that's popular and wanted by local people in that part of the city. And with all respect, the removal of a single convenience store in the middle of Winchester is not going to suddenly enable no development to happen in any greenfield anywhere else in the middle of the district. in the middle of, in the middle of the district. We're running into something that we always run into when we run into these brownfield discussions, and that's fantasy brownfield. There's this supposed inexhaustible store of fantasy brownfield where we can allow development of housing and somehow magically protect any development on any greenfields anywhere else in the district. The truth is, we're already, most of the numbers that are delivered are already being delivered on brownfield, and intensification and densification are within our cities. Only a small proportion are on greenfield sites, precisely because the plan you have in front of you today is a brownfield first site. The fantasy brownfield that the Conservatives on the one hand seem to say that they want and then at the same time say they don't want doesn't exist. There is no site. Every time we ask people who say we should go, who say we're not building on brownfield first, what the specific site is they wish us to build on, they are unable to name it. Let's also forget that we do have a requirement to deliver employment land. And just as in the same way as you can lose control of a local plan because you do not allocate enough housing land, you can lose control of a local plan because you do not allocate enough employment land. And if we were to withdraw the mixed-use development within the city, if we were to withdraw the employment allocation at Bushfield Camp, then we would at that point open ourselves to speculative development for employment land anywhere in the district, because we would not be able to demonstrate that we have that supply. So we have in front of us a motion that is a fantasy, an amendment that is a fantasy, that is built on the false and incorrect idea that we have not already developed a plan that goes brownfield first, that develops to the right level of density, and that delivers what's right to our district to ensure that we have the right balanced considered plan that works for how development should happen here. We will not be supporting it. It's poorly thought through. It contradicts half of what half the Conservative group has said anyway. And so there is no coherence to it, there is no logic to it, and we will not be supporting it here tonight.
Thank you. Would the, oh, sorry. Who've we got, Brian Laming? Councillor Laming, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sure that councillor Godfrey had the best of intentions when he brought this forward, but he hasn't thought it through thoroughly enough. I'm sorry to point that out to you. You're talking about the Old Depot. It was the Conservatives that promised the convenience store there when we built the leisure centre. I'm very sorry that you forgot that small point. Building on brownfield sites is very good, except for the Conservative government listed certain things that are classified as brownfield sites: garden centres and golf courses. Now, we have a tremendous problem with a developer that's trying to develop a golf course which is outside our settlement boundary. Are we proposing to suddenly allow that to happen? Because the southern people who are in our ward just wouldn't stand for that. It's a very badly thought-out amendment, I'm sorry. I cannot support it.
Thank you. Councillor Brooke, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Todd, I will speak to you afterwards. I can give you two specific names just off the top of my head of brownfield sites that could be allocated there. Thank you.
Councillor Williams, please.
Thank you very much, dear. I'm slightly baffled really with this amendment, because this local plan is under the previous Conservative government's housing numbers. So where does the local Conservatives here propose to build all those houses? I mean, in a rural community such as mine in Bishopswaltham, I think of two brownfield sites, one of which is a former petrol station. Putting 100 flats there would amount to a 16-storey block of flats, rather quite more prominent than the lovely palace ruins next door to it. So I'm really quite confused to where he thinks these sites will go, so I'm afraid I can't support this whatsoever.
Thank you. Councillor Scott, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Looking at the recent cabinet minutes, there was a speaker who is an ex-councillor, Mr Tate, I believe. He predominantly put a point across proposals of developments of a 21st century council state in Winchester, drawn historic presidents like Stanmore State to address the district housing issues. So if we could go purely on brownfield sites, Stanmore itself wouldn't have been built all those years ago. And just within the last local plan, Win 10, fixated on my brain for that 2 o'clock AM meeting, when we did have sandwiches and teas and coffees in those days as councillors. A greenfield site, we lost to a five-day inquiry, which was Winchester Village, which was on the Pitt Manor site of the 200 homes and park and ride. That's in St Luke's. The previous administration wanted in the new homes planned, the green site of the valley to be built on, and there's 77 units there, and I'm very appreciative, and I very supported that, I spoke at Brownin. And that's a mixture of shared and rented ownership on that site, and we have some really gratitude tenants living in some accommodation on a greenfield site in the valley. We've had Braddock Down, a radian scheme, built in about 2014 with seven free beds on an old allotment site, and they replaced the two houses knocked down in Cromwell Road and replaced them, so it was nine units in all. We've had Silkstead Park built in the last couple of years, nine units up on Kilmarnock. We've got a pending another site in Pitt Manor for 47 houses pending. We had a brownfield site, Queenshead pub site, which was turned into, with our new homes, the very 21 units. And we've got an old dining hall site still under development next to Stanmore Primary School. We've had a reuse of someone's garden on Batter Road North, with about seven units, Calvary Gardens. You can get in the point. If we restrict ourselves with what's coming forward and we only do brownfield sites, we don't have the developments and the sites and the opportunities for residents to have, and the young families and students and old people to have a roof over their heads in the years to come. We cannot restrict ourselves to brownfield sites. As I say, someone years ago, in 1921, 22, 23, when Stanmore was built, made a decision that that greenfield site should have a housing estate on it. And there was a plaque last year, we celebrated 100 years of the original Stanmore State being built by the then Prince of Wales, Edward, who put a tree there and there's a plaque there. And if we didn't have that decision done years ago, the greenfield site and Stanmore State as we know would never be there. So I cannot support this amendment moving forward. Thank you.
Right, thank you. The second would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I welcome the progressive policy, NE1, which aims to protect and enhance biodiversity in the natural environment, and also policy D6, which assures us that the policies will focus on a brownfield-first approach for development. But this administration needs to assure our concerned residents that it will intensify the density and/or mixed proportions of housing versus retail office premises in our own properties where development is planned. Councillor Cutler advised that central Winchester not only could but should take the current allocation. Areas of opportunity such as Bar End and Station Approach are not only in immediate proximity to the significant range of services, facilities and employment that Winchester town has to offer, they are in the most sustainable locations in terms of access to creative and educational opportunities and to the visitor and tourism economy. Their proximity provides direct access to transport infrastructure. The local plan advises that regeneration will make best use of previously developed land. This administration must assure residents that rather than add retail areas and offices in these brownfield areas in central Winchester, they will swiftly refocus and revise the plans to increase the percentage of housing in the mixed-use allocations to alleviate the pressure to build on the precious green fields throughout our district. After all, it's the green and pleasant land that makes Winchester the best district in which to live. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call on Jackie Porter to make the final response, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've listened to the debate carefully, and I'd just like to follow through on a couple of the matters. One is that the current MPPF expects that at least 10% of the housing requirement, which in our case is about 1,500 dwellings, to be provided on sites no larger than one hectare. In general, in Winchester, the brownfield sites are no greater than one hectare. They're often windfall sites because people haven't come off them yet, they rebuild on the same site. And those figures in our numbers is expected to be 1,725, which is greater than the 10% of our allocation. So I believe that we are doing our absolute best to increase the densification within our cities and our communities that already exist. Some of those will inevitably be in rural sites, and some of them are in the more urban sites, but that's the figure that we're talking about. I thought that it was very interesting to hear some of the definitions of brownfield sites that we now have from councillor Laming. The principle of building on a golf course or on a, or any other site that's been like a garden centre sounds a very unintended consequences of what you're suggesting there. There is absolutely no proof in any way that what is going to be proposed in any of the sites that we've got listed in the, in the plan, of any of those brownfield sites not delivering to their best ability the number of homes we need. Bearing in mind that a lot of the city centre sites and urban sites, in fact, in our historic towns, as councillor Williams pointed out, many of those are very close to heritage sites in their own right. To densify the neighbouring site to such an extent that it damages the integrity of the historical setting would be deeply, deeply wrong. The principle that we've talked about here, just to restrict brownfield sites, I was really struck, in fact, by councillor Scott's comments. We need homes for young people to live, and we know that brownfield sites are notoriously difficult to work in terms of viability, and we know ourselves, we have to reduce the viability of affordable housing on brownfield sites. And if we want the maximum number of affordable houses we can get, then this is not necessarily the best answer to what we're, to what we're doing. The most important thing though, I think, for me, is the fact of the principle of calling it back. We're having lots of fine words about saying that we want to help get this through, we want to speed it, keep the pace up, we want to get this to a point where our planning committee and our planning team know that when they're making a decision, they're making it against a solid local plan. But then you're saying we call it back, by even a few weeks, it will put the whole plan at risk, and we don't want to do that. So I urge all of you as individual councillors and as potentially as ward members as well to think about the impact this would have on your ward if this, the local plan did not go through, what would it mean for your ward? Is it really sensible to be calling it back at this point? And if you think it is, then fine, but if you don't, then please don't vote for the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Porter. I think at this point we will put this amendment to the vote. All those in favour of the amendment? And all of those against the amendment? Right. Are there any abstentions, please? Abstention, thank you. I think we can agree that that amendment is rejected. And to go back to the original motion, I would like to call on councillor Porter to sum up, please.
Thank you. I'm just going to put this in context for all of you, that in 2023, our planning department determined 1,762 planning applications, approved those. And we built 1,095 homes, of which 37% were affordable homes. And we collected 1.7 million community infrastructure levy, and we have a housing land supply of 7.3 years, and it's predicted between 24 to 28, we'll have a housing, 24 to 29, we expect a seven-year housing supply, land supply. So this local plan sets out our visions and objectives for future development across the district outside the National Park, in Winchester, our market towns, our villages, and the major new developments such as North Whiteley. It includes development management policies against which both housing and employment sites will be assessed, while protecting and providing green and blue infrastructure and protecting our heritage areas and developing them around them. This local plan is planning up to 2040, and whilst there may be challenges ahead, this local plan provides a framework for the planning applications until the next local plan, which we acknowledge will be sooner rather than later. I urge you, in fact, to take the time to read the forward in the local plan, Reg 19, and to make comments to the Reg 19 consultation, and importantly, hopefully, to approve it. I just wanted to talk about some of the things that we discussed in the debate. Councillor Wallace talked about the car and saving. He was pleased that if our plan is actually agreed, this plan will allow us to demand better from developers, and that's proving to be even the case as we speak. We have been able to explain that to developers, and they are realising that they won't be able to sell the houses if they're not to the highest standards that we're asking. Councillor Godfrey complained that small sites may not bring forward the infrastructure we need. Is he suggesting the big sites instead? I have to ask that question. But the strategic issues and options favoured smaller over larger sites, except on brownfield land. And we have, we have actually accepted what those strategic issues and options papers said. Councillor Chamberlain asked about discussions with parish councils. The method by which sites were chosen buried hugely among the communities. And I'm pleased to say that the ward that councillor Cleymoys and I represent and councillor Rutter took it the ball by the horns, and they actually asked everybody about all of the sites. And we haven't heard a murmur since, because it's a decision that's been made by all for all. So the method, I think, will have to be thought about for the next local plan, and I'll be urging all councils to do that same process next time, no questions asked. Questions were asked on sites and policies, that was very helpful today, often it just links to sites only. But councillor Lee was talking about SDMP, SD2, to adopt that as a principle to tie up with National Park. Well, in 2023, as I said, Winchester built 1,095 homes alone in one year. The National Park is actually working towards 350 homes over 20 years. So I'm not sure which way around that work should be, should be held, should be done. Councillor Lernay made it very clear that we're very definitely planning for the minimal need to use a car, and we reflect those aspirations for a green And we reflect those aspirations for a greener district in that. Councillor Williams raised a very good point about this Tallgate site. It was carried over the previous local plan, but actually working really hard with the local community and the ICB and the local parish council. We're getting to a point where a piece of land could actually be allocated for a purpose that the village wants or the town wants, which is excellent. It's conversations such as this, positive conservations, which are essential to make changes and provide the infrastructure that residents really need. I finish with a comment about councillor Horrell, who said that officers deserve our thanks. This was before the Conservatives made the amendment, I hasten to add. So I will say sincerely my thanks to the officers who have had to cope with twists and turns throughout all of this. And I endorse councillor Horrell's comment. Covid has required the rewrite of much of it. And it's also, we've actually seen a change in working patterns and living patterns from 2019 all the way through to 2024. So I really do endorse the comment that she made, which is officers do deserve our thanks. It has been a very hard piece of work to do, but we are making our way towards that final consultation and hopefully approval. So I do hope you will take the opportunity today to encourage your residents to take part in Reg 19 consultation. For the people that are, well, councillors are in the local, South House National Park, I hope you've all finished applying your brains to the options consultation that's on their website as well at the moment. But this is about Winchester's local plan, not the National Park's local plan. And I'm very pleased that you have endorsed the change or certainly that you have agreed not to accept the amendment, which would have provided an unacceptable amount of delay. And I'm urging you to vote this time for the local plan as it sits on the Cabinet paper 3462. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Could I, councillor Todd, would you like to exercise your final reply?
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to do that. And I would also like to particularly thank councillor Porter for her leadership in getting the plan to this point and to the officer team led by Adrian Fox, supported by Julie Pinnock and Dawn Ady for the incredible amount of really thorough work that has gone into the papers that you see before us this evening. I'd also like to thank councillor colleagues for all the challenge and questions and input that you've made during the course of the debate and also the members of the public. Let's not forget that we've got to this point because we have consulted with thousands of members of the public, award-winning consultation. And I've also valued the points that they've brought to us in person at Cabinet and here this evening. So councillor Porter has laid out how we have a plan designed to meet the many challenges our district faces of affordability, of climate change, of nutrient pollution and the need to protect the natural and historical environment that make our district so special. How it carefully allocates, increases the allocation of sites, going beyond the voluntary target set by the last government with demanding requirements for affordable housing, putting brownfield first, tackling phosphate and nitrate pollution, supporting biodiversity and tackling the climate crisis. It requires the right infrastructure and quality of design that people rightfully expect in our district. But importantly, it also addresses the new challenges proposed to every planning, local planning authority by the new Labour government. They're rightly asking all governments, all councils to play their part in tackling the housing crisis, highlighting a moral obligation to see more homes built, the need for more social and affordable homes, making brownfield land the first port of call, as we have in our plan before us here tonight, and ensuring development delivers the infrastructure we need and to move ahead at pace with our strategic planning. Now, as part of this, of achieving this, on July 30, they launched their consultation on new NPPF and how local authorities should transition to plans against that NPPF, which incorporate those aims and which we are taking on, we're taking on that challenge today. And where people have disagreements with the NPPF, I would strongly advise that you do respond to it. Where you agree with it, you should respond to it. So we've brought forward this meeting in order to ensure that we are consistent with the timings and approach that they laid out with the annex to the NPPF, the draft NPPF. As soon as tonight's plan completes consultation, inspection and is adopted, we are also committing ourselves unambiguously and without reservation to commence plan-making in the new plan-making system at the earliest opportunity, should it be needed to address any shortfall in housing need. The cabinet recommendations before us tonight are designed to enable us to move ahead at pace while also responding to the points made tonight at Cabinet and starting consultation at the earliest opportunity. But most of all, we have the chance to ensure that our district continues to move ahead. The homes we need, the workspaces we need, carefully planned, low carbon, protecting our natural environment, protecting our historic environment with the infrastructure we need. We've consulted, we've listened, we've adjusted and responded, and we're ready to go. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to back the resolutions in front of us tonight.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Right, I would like to call on the members to vote on the, accepting the recommendations 1 to 5 as set out on the agenda and on pages 16 to 17 of the draft minutes of the cabinet as attached to the supplementary agenda. Are these agreed? All those in favour? Against? Right. Abstentions? Right. Safely say that the recommendation is carried. Right. Thank you for your time and effort. And my particular thanks to the officers for helping to run the meeting and for stepping forward and giving useful technical advice as required. Thank you very much.
Can you stop the broadcast?
Yes, we can turn the broadcast off.